That was cool. It being seven o'clock, I hereby call to order this meeting of the Kenmore Planning Commission. First item on the agenda is citizen comment. If any citizens wishing to render comment, please step forward to the podium on your right or left, state your name, your address, and please limit your comment to three minutes. All right. Going once, twice, gone. Citizen comment is now closed. We move to the next item on the agenda, approval of the October 17, 2017 Planning Commission Meeting Minutes. Do I hear any discussion? Okay, then I will make some. Let me know by raising hands who received the email I sent out yesterday with the proposed revision to the minutes. And if you didn't, I've got a couple copies I can hand you. There was the paragraph in the minutes that I proposed we revise because it left out some things that we talked about. Who needs a copy? Commissioner? Commissioner? Okay. So if you want to take a minute to read that over, it would replace the second full paragraph in the minutes we received in our package. Take that to mean you need more time? Yes, Dennis?
Well, just while they're reading.
Yeah.
The question I have is protocol. I realize I was here and didn't abstain, but I wasn't there. So the question I have is what should one normally do if you were to...
About what? Whether to approve those minutes?
Yeah.
Were you here when...
No, October 3rd.
This was on October 17.
Yeah, but we were...
I think you want to withdraw your vote for the October 13 minutes.
That's what I'm wondering what I should... I don't know whether I should have voted.
Right.
So I'm asking.
I think you should note for the record when the staff's before us that you'd like to withdraw your vote for the October, and it was a mistake.
Yeah. So is that a draw?
Yeah, why don't we do this? Yeah, why don't you just, when we talk about 17 and then afterward, why don't you make your note to withdraw your vote? I mean, at least having read it?
What you got? What's your motion again?
My motion is to revise the minutes to replace the first full paragraph of page two with what I've submitted both by email and in hard copy. Lori?
Sentence about TR and I wonder if that...
Yeah, that's fine.
...bites a little bit.
The sentence that was in the draft you received?
Correct. Yeah, if the last sentence reads, she suggested programs that could...
Yeah, I'm fine with that, but when everybody's done reading, then I'll make a motion. But Scott, are you done reading? You up to speed on this? Mark?
I'm good.
Okay. Mike?
Done reading.
All right. So I'd like to move to adopt the minutes as amended by what I've submitted both by email and in hard copy and what Lori proposed with respect to the last sentence. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Mike?
Your suggestion here, Doug, where the sentence in the first paragraph begins, "Housing experts from various sectors agree."
Right.
I think it would be more accurate to say Chairman Nugent stated.
Yeah, that's fine. That's what I meant to indicate because I put, I think I put that I... Scott, can I see what I handed you? It was one of my only hard copies.
The previous sentence says that you agreed with Commissioner Van der Linde, and I see where you could think...
Does he indicated, he agreed. Yes, that's my point is that if you'd like, Chair Nugent stated that.
Yeah, just to differentiate that from the statement as...
He indicated there...
That's true.
All right, is everybody in agreement nor understand that comment by Mike? My motion would be to amend with this, with Mike's comment, to say he stated before, one, two, three, four, fifth sentence, the word housing. He stated that housing experts from various sectors of the industry. So that's the motion as amended, or motion as seconded in the other discussion? Dennis?
Well, I'm a little confused, but I think what we're doing is voting on the proposal.
Yes, well, we're voting to revise the minutes as proposed in my handout.
There'll be a second.
No, this is to accept the minutes as amended in accordance with my handout.
There is more discussion because I don't recall voting over third, but I also didn't formally abstain.
Okay, and was that, is that in these minutes?
It's on paragraph three.
Okay, so you want to amend the minutes to say the motion passed six zero with no extensions to say it passed five zero with one extension?
Right.
Okay.
And simply because it wasn't there.
Right. Okay. Any objections to that? Okay, so now the motion is to amend the minutes according to the handout that I sent by email and hard copy, to revise according to what Lori proposed for the last sentence, and to revise the reference to the vote on the October 3rd minutes to say passed five zero with one extension. Do I hear a second on that? Yeah. All right. Further discussion? None? All in favor of the motion? Raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Any extensions? There being none, the motion carries. Five to zero, minutes are approved. Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda is Housing Strategy Plan, Preserving Existing Affordable Housing. I invite to the presentation table the city staff and their consultants.
So, good evening, Commissioners. This evening, the primary focus of the meeting is to hear from folks. So we have representatives representing both mobile home park owners and mobile home park homeowners or tenants who are here to speak and tell you a little bit about their perspective, their background, and then are available for questions. So as of this point, we have Craig Hillis with the Manufactured Housing Communities of Washington, and Bo, I'm not sure...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to defer to Jeremy Millard.
Oh, okay. And Jeremy Millard, who actually is one of the mobile home park owners in Kenmore. They're speaking from the owner's perspective. And then separately, we have Ishbel Dickens?
Yeah.
And she is representing the perspective of mobile home park homeowners and tenants. So we will call them up to the table. I wanted to call your attention to a couple of things. One is that in front of you tonight, I had, as you know, we sent the letter out to the mobile home park owners, and I've heard from two of them. And my notes from a conversation with Daniel Stoner are included, as is an email from Jeremy Millard, who I think is the person who may be speaking this evening. So that provides some general background about those two parks. I have not heard from the other three owners. So that's one thing. And then the other thing I wanted to mention was just the information that we had attached to the agenda bill. We tried to include the information that we heard that you were interested in at the last meeting. Hopefully, we didn't miss anything. And so if there's time afterward and if you have questions about those materials, we could discuss that. So unless you have other things you want to discuss, we'll invite the presenters up to the table, and they can give you their perspectives, and you can ask questions of them.
All right.
Does that sound okay?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'm going to get out of the middle of this and move down to an end. And Mike, obviously, Mike Sanger from Arch is also here as well.
Craig, would you like to start?
Sure. Sit here. A couple of mics. Hello, Commissioners. My name is Craig Hillis. I'm with the Manufactured Housing Communities of Washington. We're a trade organization that has been around since 1960, and representing mostly park owners. Our, sort of our mission statement is to, as a resource for successful manufactured home communities, effective government relationship, industry education, information and public education. We've got about 500 members of the 1,400 communities across the state. There is about 200,000 people that live in manufactured homes, communities across the state total, about 75,000 sites. And it's about a $3 billion business, and we pay about $300 million in property taxes. It is not a growing business as of now. In the 70s and 80s, it was a booming business. Today, it is a declining business. The biggest problem is that there is not land outside of the GMA to build communities. And inside of growth boundaries, there hasn't been an emphasis to upzone or to create places for manufactured housing to be built. They compete with other types of multifamily housing and other types of commercial development. So if you have any questions, please, I don't really, Jeremy, he's a park owner, can you give a distracted? Primarily, what we do at this point is provide education. So we put on a state convention, and we do training around the state at different, you know, locations. We bring in fair housing people to talk about fair housing. We bring in attorneys to talk about legal issues that come up. This year, we had the AG's dispute resolution program. Their represents come and talk at our training. So really, we provide forums and training mostly for manufactured home communities owners at this point. 20, 30 years ago, we helped, you know, promote the industry as a growth industry, but today it's not. So really, what we're doing is training for everybody across the state to keep safe, good, well-run communities, so.
Thanks, Craig.
Yep.
I open the floor to my colleagues if you have questions. I have a few.
I have one.
Yeah, please.
So you mentioned it's not currently a growth industry. Is it in decline? Is it a negative growth industry? Is it shrinking?
It's shrinking, yes. It's not shrinking rapidly, but, you know, it's shrinking at about a half a percent a year at this point.
Who else? Mark?
So what are some of the, I don't know, common themes you're seeing in the parks that are closing? Are there any particular trends that are causing that decline?
Well, a couple of the, sort of the larger trends or the most frustrating trends are that they're closing because we have no way of redeveloping the community as a community again. The only avenue we have to close a section or to put in new homes or to increase in infrastructure is to close the entire community. When the entire community gets closed, then there's forces from other types of uses that want to come in there. Also, quite honestly, you know, cities would rather see, I don't know, 100, even if they're low-income housing, be built than keeping an old manufactured home communities. I mean, the couple that have been in the news a lot, one of them in Des Moines, I mean, the city of Des Moines upzoned the area with the three manufactured home communities to 20 stories, and the city intentionally pushed those communities out. And so it got closed by Des Moines wanting to build a new city center.
Okay, so, sorry, Mark. So the owners of those communities received fair market value for the sale of the property, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So the person didn't have to sell it, they just upzoned it, and they weren't forced to sell it, but they got a good price, I assume?
Um, well, the ones in Des Moines, it's a long story because they, first, they came through and widened the road and took out half of the front of the community, and so the community wasn't viable anymore. And because they, and they did pay fair market value for 20 feet of the community, but it impacted 30 homes because it made those lots not usable anymore. So that was the first thing they did to, I guess, not intentionally, but unintentionally, cause the community not to be as viable. And then they upzoned it, and they taxed it at the new rate, so that raised the taxes on the community, and so the tax rate went up. And then the community was purchased by, or optioned by one group, and then the decline happened in 2007, and now it finally got closed. So it's been about a, I don't know, 10-year process since it first started.
So in the city, it widened a road in front of the mobile home park? Is that right?
Why did it get widened?
No, I asked if it, if I understood you correctly, they widened a road that abutted the mobile home park?
Correct.
Did they exercise eminent domain?
Yes.
Okay. So the owner received fair market value, the city widened a road near the, abutting the park, and it could be a lot of reasons for that, like increased traffic and development in the area.
Mm-hmm.
And then the taxes went up because of the upzone.
Correct.
You're saying there's a new, there's a separate and higher tax rate for higher zone property, higher density zone property?
Yes.
Okay. So even though it wasn't developed, the owner of the park was paying a higher tax rate?
Yes. And they also lost sites because when they widened the road, they did pay fair market value for 10 feet or 15 feet of the road widening.
Right.
But in fact, it impacted about a third of the community.
Yeah.
Because now those homes could not be sighted on those sites anymore.
Right.
So they also lost income.
Yeah. Okay. Other questions?
What was the impact on the tenants? What was the impact on the tenants that were in Des Moines?
What was the impact on the tenants during the transition period or when the community finally got closed?
Both.
Um, well, there was, you know, impact on the community during the period of time because, in fact, you know, their community lost a number of home sites, and because the city of Des Moines made it perfectly known that they, at some point, wanted to close the community. So I'm sure the people in the community knew that at some point the community was going to close. When the communities closed, they were given the year's notice, and in fact, the community closed, and the people relocated to someplace else.
And the replacement units with the higher density, did the rents go up significantly over the manufacturing?
They did go up, I would assume. I do not know for fact if they went up, but in fact, they built about three times as many low-income housing on the site for new people to come in there. I would guess that because it's new construction, even if it's lower income, it was more expensive than the, you know, old inefficient manufactured homes that were there.
Was it quality development?
Um, I have not been there to see what's coming out of the ground. All I saw was drawings of it at the time that they were proposing it, and it appeared to be a quality construction. It was not a, you know, it's not like downtown Bellevue or something. I mean, it's a lower income, you know, development that was going in there, is my understanding. Again, I haven't been down there to look at it since it was built, or since it's under construction now.
One more question. What's the benefit of preserving manufactured housing?
What's the benefit of it?
Yeah, I mean, globally with the tenants and the owners, and, I mean, you've been advocating for them for some time, I would think.
The benefit for manufactured housing is that it is a step between like apartments and homeownership, so like stick-built owners. And it is relatively affordable for a piece of property that has, you know, a yard and everything over a, like a stick-built type regular residential community. The industry was in a boom when, in fact, there was land, and you could put newer homes in there, and it was a, you know, a community. But now, what's happened is a lot of those communities have gotten older. They were built in the 60s or 70s, and in fact, they have inefficient homes there. And if there was a way that those homes could be replaced, if there was a way that the infrastructure could be, you know, redone, because something was built in the 60s or 70s, may need new roads, may need new water systems, may need new sewer systems put in there. And because the only way to do that is to close the community, you lose all that income from a closed community, but you still have all the taxes, plus you have the expense of redoing it, and so it doesn't pencil out to, at this point, to do that. If there was a way to do it, I think manufactured housing communities could come back, and I truly think that at some point they will. It's a, you know, the tiny house movement, the smaller house movement, is all, you know, not there, but sort of underfoot. There just isn't any place to do it at this point.
Anything else, Scott? I saw Carol with her hand up. Go ahead, Carol.
I recently heard about the Housing Authority buying a mobile home park in Redmond. Do you know anything about that? They did it to preserve...
Housing Authority buy one in Redmond.
Friendly Village?
It was, yeah.
Friendly Village?
Um, so was it Rock that bought it? Friendly Village is a 55-plus community on Amundale Road. I assume that that's what you're talking about? Yeah. I do not know anything specifically about that community. I do not. But there is housing groups that own communities, and there is also, you know, cities that are closing them, and there's, you know, parking rides come in where there was a manufactured home community, and they want to increase the, you know, the parking ride. I just mentioned Des Moines, that was a private entity, but it was sort of city-sponsored, I guess. That's not really the right word, but encouraged, let's put it that way. But I don't, I did not know that Friendly Village had sold too. So it sold to the tenant groups, or was it King County Housing Authority purchased?
King County Housing Authority.
King County Housing Authority, yeah. They owned a number of communities.
Yes? I want to follow up. Can I? Yeah, go ahead. Okay, I want to follow up on some of your questions. But I first want to ask Craig, you know, you gave an introduction, and you talked about the number of members in your trade group, the number of communities that they serve. I thought you mentioned the number of tenants throughout the state living in these mobile home parks. Did you?
Um, there's about 75,000 home sites, and at, you know, two or two and a half per site, I said 200,000. That's a rough figure. I don't know how many there is exactly.
Right.
But there's about 74, 75,000 home sites in about 1,400 communities.
Thanks. When you say the industry's declining, I know there's rapid price appreciation in the Puget Sound area, particularly King County, Snohomish, Pierce. Is that true statewide? I mean, is it just declining because of the lack of affordable land in this area, or is that throughout the state?
Throughout the state.
Okay.
It's not just here. I mean, there's more pressure here, but in fact, the same, I mean, the Shelton area in particular is really pushing hard to try to get manufactured housing built outside of the GMA because they, when they originally, you know, made their plan, they pointed on the street, four blocks, and now they're locked in, so they don't have any area to expand.
And you said that an owner of a mobile home park can't, cannot improve the infrastructure without losing their tenants?
It's...
So if they try to upgrade everything...
It makes it very difficult because a lot of the water lines and sewer lines go underneath the homes.
Yeah.
And so to put in new water lines or sewer lines or whatever, it disrupts the property.
Couldn't they stagger the process to some extent? Like improve it for a certain block of homes? Yeah, they'd lose those tenants after giving them the required notice, but then they could fill those units again, and then they could try and improve the sewer lines elsewhere. It's the same with roads.
The way our state statute reads right now, we cannot do that. There's no way to do that.
Because what in the state statute prevents that?
It says that you have to treat everybody equally, and you have to close the entire community. That would be a wonderful solution to the problem, yes.
Has your group lobbied? I mean, it's a state statute, so I assume the legislature in Olympia.
Uh, we've tried to run bills around that, and they've not gotten traction. The biggest problem is that, I mean, honestly, from tenant groups, it's that, you know, how do you pick which part is going to close and which part is going to not? And so it creates disruption, and so they're against it.
Yeah. Was, is it typical for the owner of a mobile home park to give the tenants a chance, you know, to organize, to buy the park before it's sold to another party?
Um, well, they don't give them a first right refusal, if that's what you're asking. And there's a number of homeowners organizations that, you know, work with the tenants to try to purchase them. The park owner, you know, they'll, when they see an offer from somebody, they review it. I don't think very many park owners specifically go to their tenants first and say, would you like to buy this?
I'm sorry, they don't?
They do not.
So there's, you know, handouts that we received from the city staff. There's a printout from a website from the Housing, Washington State Housing Finance Commission, and it is an article describing preserving manufactured housing communities and how this commission can work with tenant groups to get the financing to buy the park before it's sold to others. Are you familiar with this program?
I'm somewhat familiar with this program, yes.
Okay. What's your trade group's position on it?
Wonderful.
Okay.
If they can organize a group and they can purchase a community, I'm all for it.
Does it frequently happen?
Um, when they get organized, they put forward a, an offer, and, you know, I don't, it doesn't happen as frequently as all sales, but yes, it happens a number of times across Washington State and across the nation, yes.
Can you give me a percentage, how often this, these tenant organizations can buy, have bought parks?
I do not know for sure. I know there's been at least a dozen of them purchased over the last few years in Washington, but no, I don't keep track of what it is, no.
And as far as you know, this program that's just, well, from the Housing Finance Commission, they call it the Resident-Owned Communities, ROCs, with low-cost loans, works.
Yes.
I mean, you've seen it operate, you've seen it succeed in funding the project.
It works. It is a, in my opinion, a kind of short solution to it, short term, because they're going to run into the same problems in five, 10, 50 years down the road that the community owners run into right now.
Which is to say, you can't really improve the park without losing all the tenants.
Right. Or, you know, it's going to increase their rents, which is now going to be their mortgage payment because they're going to have to put a bunch of money into the community.
Right.
Similar to a condo situation where, you know, if it's rundown or whatever, they're going to have to put a bunch of money into it and keep it up.
The assessments go up.
Yeah.
Have you seen that?
But I'm not opposed to the, it's a program at all.
Right. Thanks. So you've seen this play out, where the tenants organize, they buy the park. Have you seen them run into these problems? You're saying they're likely to, or they have in the past, and then they're stuck financially, or they try to sell it?
Well, I have... Well, I haven't been directly involved in, in one to know, um, how it works as far as, you know, managing the community. I know that, um, I've, I've heard that after they purchase a community, a rock in particular, uh, resident-owned communities, they work with the tenants for a number of years, trying to get them up to speed on, you know, what's going on, and help them through the process. Um, but they end up, from what I've heard, um, you know, disputes with, uh, other tenants in there, of what the plan is going forward. Um, not everybody always buys into it, so then they have a few rental units at the same time that they have homeowner units, so they have that conflict. So they, um, just like a homeowners association, there ends up to be, you know, issues, um, running the community.
Because there are multiple owners, or it's a co-op, cooperative, that's the word I saw in the, the materials we received.
Right.
There are multiple votes on how to proceed, and it, as opposed to having a, either a single owner, or a very small group of owners, or a family that owns it, that don't tend to have as much, uh, disagreement.
Right.
Is that what you're getting at?
Exactly.
Okay. And then, um, you had said, and I know we're focusing a lot on one, I'm sorry.
Oh, I, I was just going to comment that, um, Ms. Dickens is also here, and, and that would be a good question for her as well, because she's worked with these groups.
Great.
So when-
Yeah, she works real closely with them.
I was planning to get both sides on this. Um, Craig, you had said, and I know we're over-focusing on this, this anecdotal event down in Burien, was it Burien?
Mm-hmm.
Where, I'm sorry, Des Moines. And, uh, but as long as it's a reasonably good example, it, so it built, they build, you know, dozens, hundreds of units, and a lot of them are, you said, uh, affordable housing units, so they're set at, uh, fifty or seventy percent of median county income. They have to be affordable for somebody with that kind of income level?
I, I don't know exactly what the income level is, but yes.
But those are some of the standard affordable housing. I think Mike Stanger could, could speak to that too, as well as the staff. So that's what we've been told. Those are the kind of, uh, income levels we're trying to, to help here with these, uh, proposals. Um, are you saying then, and you said, "Well, the rents are higher," but it seems to me they would be probably pretty close if they're affordable, if they're required to be afforded by people at these lower income levels. But is it still, are you saying that the rents in the mobile home parks are so low that they're way below even what the affordable housing rents are?
You know, I, maybe I misspoke. I, I assumed that they would be higher because they're brand-new units. I do not know. I don't know how they're, I've never seen their performa.
Okay.
I don't know how much the rents are.
You're not sure.
Um, uh, you know, um, I'm not a hundred percent sure what they are.
Okay. And Scott, you've been very patient. Thanks for waiting. Go ahead and throw in your additional question.
I just, you know, this RCW that you talk about, that you got, everybody needs to be treated equally, and it sounds like, and that's preventing improvements on these mobile home parks to bring them into the twentieth century or twenty-first century. Uh, so, uh, are they doomed?
Um, I have wondered often if we're in the dial-phone business with our, uh, current model for manufactured housing. I don't think manufactured housing, I actually think manufactured housing, conceptually and long-term, is going to be more the way we have housing than we do today, okay? But short-term during this transition, I'm not sure that the traditional model that we have is going to, um, work indefinitely. It's relatively low-zoning, um, a lot of the communities are fairly close in, they're competing with other types of uses, and they have this problem of not being able to redevelop and put in, say, tiny homes, or build a new type of, of, you know, community. The reason that people like communities, and the reason why that they're, have lasted so long, even though the housing stock in a number of them is old, is people love the community feeling. They really like living, um, in a community. They like their neighbors, they get to know everybody, they really like that sort of, that community that's built up within the, um, you know, structure of the, um, property. So, um, you know, it's, there's more, uh, manufactured homes sold in Texas than there is in virtually the rest of the United States. I mean, I think there was less than a thousand manufactured homes, um, delivered into Washington State, um, in two thousand seventeen, and that includes all the ones that were put on land also. So there might have been a couple hundred, maybe, that were, um, cited in parks.
That's my next question, is how many new units have come into the, um-
Sixteen, there was like eight hundred and fifty total that were delivered into the state of Washington. Seventeen, there'll probably be a thousand or twelve hundred, and I would say not more than ten percent of those actually go into, it'll go into communities. The rest of them are going onto land in, you know, some farm in eastern Washington, or some mountainville, you know, mountain community in Leavenworth, or maybe not Leavenworth, but Kalam or, you know, wherever. So, um, yeah.
Yeah, I just saw one out in, uh, Snohomish County on a big, three-acre plot, and the guy put it right in the middle of it.
Yeah.
So.
There's a lot of them sold in, in Idaho that go to landhome package, because they have a short building season, and so they like, um, build manufactured home. And the new manufactured home product is a great product. It is every bit as good as, you know, better than most of the tract homes that are built. They're built in an environment that's, um, you know, controlled, um, they have good sense, they seal up well, they've got, they're really good product. Um, products that were built in RV code in the sixties and early seventies and, um, are not such a good product. The ones that, you know, ninety and newer are pretty good, and the brand-new ones are really good, as far as they're being energy-efficient and-
But you're saying a lot of these homes are put on single-family lots, not on mobile home parks?
Yes.
And we're focusing on mobile home parks.
Yeah. I would guess that there's, was less than, I mean, I don't know the exact number, but less than two hundred new homes cited in manufactured home communities in, um, in seventeen.
Anything else? So, the city of Kenmore, we, we learned recently, has voted to pass a moratorium on the, um, the improvement of, I think it is, these mobile home parks in Kenmore? Development of, sale of, permits issued for those purposes?
Re-development, correct.
Re-development of these mobile home parks. Um, what's your trade group's position on that moratorium?
Um, I think it's very short-sighted. I mean, I guess is the, is the real answer. Um, because as, you know, as I explained to some people, there's no more fish camps or sawmills in downtown Seattle. Um, but they were able to move them someplace else, as development happens, as things move forward. If there's no way to keep a manufactured home community's current, if you've got an apartment building, you can renovate the apartments, you can do something. Um, I, you know, you can stop it for a few years, it's not going to change the problem, I don't think.
Um, what are the, okay.
So I'm opposed to it. I mean, it, it's-
Yeah, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to, to understand, I mean, that's, you're saying because the, the moratorium doesn't solve the pre-existing problem, that you can't improve the infrastructure-
Right.
-without losing income, rental income, from, from virtually the entire park.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but to say it doesn't solve the problem, doesn't really tell me whether it makes it worse, or, or otherwise hurts your industry. Because the problem's there with or without this moratorium.
Right.
Right. So, apart from that problem, which isn't really affected by the moratorium, what's your view of the moratorium?
I guess, one, one other way that I might describe this, and, you know, Jeremy, he owns a community here and, and may have more insight to this, is that why pick manufactured home communities? Why single out that one particular entity? What about an apartment building? What about a gas station? I mean, are you saying you're going to spot-zone that, that a gas station can only be a gas station, it can never be anything but a gas station? I mean, or a, you know, an apartment building? I know we're talking about housing-
Right.
-which is, you know, a crisis in Seattle right now, because we don't have a lot of affordable housing.
Right.
But to have a zoning ordinance that targets one single use, um, doesn't seem fair, and marginally seems constitutional to be able to do it.
Right, might be a taking. Might be such a deprivation of property rights that it might violate the constitution.
Right.
Right.
Exactly.
Um, so, would it be fair to say that your group feels like, "Hey, why are you singling us out for this, you know, community-wide problem?"
Yes.
Shouldn't there be a community-wide response to this? A community-wide sacrifice for this, instead of just us?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, a, a couple other things that, you know, only brainstorming, not saying that we take this position on it, but, uh, you know, transfer of the rights, the density rights to another piece of property, some tax breaks to, um, incentivize them to keep them, um, you know, things along those lines that would create, somebody wanting to keep the community would be better way, better served than, um, creating a, what I call a spot zone. You can't do anything with your property but this.
Right. But I mean, apart from the problem of, oh, it doesn't help on the infrastructure side, um, is, is one of the objections that, hey, by spot-zoning or imposing a moratorium, or more downzoning, so that we can't do any increase or improvement, or development, or sell it to somebody who would, doesn't that, like, take away a lot of the potential value of the property from the, from the owner?
Yes.
I mean, if somebody liked the one down in Des Moines who paid fair market value for this big park, now that's not even an option. Right, and they, you know, I'm sure there's millions of dollars at stake when you've got ten acres or something, and right now it's being used for this underdeveloped purpose, but it could be developed to the highest and best use for that zoning, right?
Right.
Which could be hundreds of units, as it was down in Des Moines-
Mm-hmm.
-which has a very high economic value. So, is that what you're getting at, in terms of the grievance that your-
Yes.
-your constituents feel?
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly.
Did, and, and, you know, I've discussed this with some other people, and I had somebody tell me once, "Well, I think it's okay to downzone mobile home parks, because the people who bought those parks knew that they had a responsibility to keep their rents low for the long term." How do you, how do you respond to that?
Um, I respond to it the same way does the person that bought the convenience store have a civic duty to keep the price of bread, um, low.
Right.
Um, supply and demand. I mean, I, I don't know-
Well, is there anything on, about mobile home parks that gives the owner notice, or a sense of, you know, a notice that they couldn't, shouldn't be able to expect to fully develop the property down the road? Like, okay, I'm going to invest in this, X million dollars in this property, in this income-producing property.
Mm-hmm.
And I know that I may not be able to fully develop it, because it is a mobile home park, which traditionally serves low-income tenants, so I accept that as part of my, the risk of my investment.
If there was an incentive, or if there was HUD financing, or if there was some, um, you know, lower tax break, it's, um, you know, forest land, I guess would be another example. There is incentives to keep forest land, because it's the price, the taxes are low, and so they keep it open in forest land. And the reason they do that is they, you know, bank it, and then, and, you know, in the future, they might do something, um, different. If there was some type of situation like that, or in manufactured home, housing communities, maybe something like that would have, um, you know, some impact. Um, yeah. But, um, as far as, you know, do they feel socially responsible? I think that most owners do keep their rents relatively low. They could increase them more to, um, you know, for supply and demand, um, but I think most of them are socially responsible in that they keep them, you know, relatively low. They're not, I mean, in California, I mean, it's two thousand dollars or more to live in a manufactured home community, because some of them are well-located, and they have, you know, uh, zoning that keeps them, and so they just jack the rent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I get where you're coming from. I know a fellow there had his hands up. I don't mind, yeah.
Traditionally, manufactured home communities were built on the outskirts of development, and, uh, built-up areas, so when they were originally built, nobody was thinking that I'm doing this specifically to provide affordable housing. Sort of a form of land banking, very similar to what you see with, uh, you know, mini-storage, that kind of thing. It's sort of an interim use, as opposed to, at the time, it was thought as the highest and best use. Now, some communities over the years have become the highest and best use for the piece of land which they're currently located on, so, you know, this debate kind of has to take into account that there's a bifurcation in this market. It's not all nineteen-sixties single wides that are ready to be torn down, nor are they all brand-new twenty-seventeen homes that are, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So, uh, I just wanted to point that out when regarding the comment about when an investor buys one-
Right.
-do they need to think of, "Oh, this is my civic duty." Well, we can always flip that and say, "Well, the resident should be aware that they're living in a temporary use or an interim use housing form."
Right.
And they should be the one that could be prepared to move as well, because that's in their lease, that the community could close with twelve months' notice.
Thanks. Your name is?
I'm Bo. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to-
I don't mind. No, you, you're all here for the same reason, I, I'm invited.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we've been involved with this some forty-seven years. My grandfather started doing it, uh, back when it first started to become a thing after World War II.
Yeah.
Uh, and we've just been doing it ever since then. We still have a new community that's in the Philip Stage over in Yakima right now, and we've, you know, we've watched the changes over the decades from the old metal-sided homes, or single-wide homes, into two- and three-section homes that are, as Craig said, comparatively built, to anything you're going to find being cut up by a Lennar or any of the other tractable which right now, so.
Bo, what's your last name?
Har, H-A-R-E.
I want it, I want that on the minutes for the meeting, it's helpful. It's very helpful.
Everything I'm saying, whole Har, so I had to make sure I split it up.
And Bo, you're, you said, you or your family or other investors own a mobile home park in this area, or?
Well, in this area, not in Kenmore. These guys have, uh, right here, uh, right downtown, but yeah, we own, uh, you and the area, it's just our family.
Okay, thanks.
So-
Yeah, please.
So I wonder, um, in the interest of time, if we want to have Mr. Millard, uh, Miller, uh, make his comments, and then, uh, give Ms. Dickens a chance to make her comments, and then we can come back, um, and have everybody with questions and comments.
Yeah, I mean, we've got a budget, you know, the two hours or so that we have here, and I know I've been really running with it. Vice Chair, I know, has a question, but, um, I, I did have a couple more, and maybe we'll just set you, set those aside for a bit, and come back to you later. And I, I mean, I kind of appreciate, Craig, that you're talking on behalf of hundreds of mobile home park owners, and I know it's very helpful to have everybody here, and give it, especially those who own the parks here in the city that are affected by this proposal, but, um, there's particular value with the breadth of your representation.
Sure.
Vice Chair, or, go ahead.
Uh, just a quick question for, for Craig there. So you mentioned, uh, transfer development rights and tax breaks as, as maybe better strategies to, to preserve, uh, existing parks. Are there any other specific strategies you've seen that have been effective, that cities have, uh, put together? Notwithstanding what you do explain in Des Moines, that didn't seem like that was along those lines. But have you seen any other, you know, cities that have done these or other strategies to, because I think that's what we were sort of charged with, right, with the city council, to look at preserving existing mobile home parks? So, I'm curious if you have other thoughts on that.
None comes to the top of my, um, I might think of some others, but those are just a couple that, you know, we bat around, and honestly, I don't know of a city that is embracing that structure, but, um, it is something that, uh, we talk about internally that would preserve or would help, um, people wanting to keep manufactured home communities viable and going forward.
So are you saying that most cities really aren't embracing that? I mean, aren't really focused on preserving mobile home parks? To, to generalize, obviously, I'm sure there's different-
Um, you know, the, the Puget Sound area, um, Snohomish, uh, Tumwater, I think, they have moratoriums, um, similar to, potentially what you guys are proposing. Um, but outside of the Puget Sound area, I'm not sure of other, um, you know, cities that have done that, and, um, I'm not aware of a lot of, uh, in- incentives that have been created to preserve manufactured housing, other than, you know, that hammer, instead of the, you know, I'm not-
So. We were told, um, that the city of Tumwater, uh, prohibited, passed an ordinance that essentially downzoned all the mobile home parks in that city to prohibit redevelopment. Is that right? And if so, what's your trade group's position on that?
Uh, that is correct, all except for the one that was right behind the Safeway store that they did not. So they-
What? But they, they, they left one-
They left one out.
Specific mobile home park out of the downzone.
Yes.
So they could redevelop, but nobody else could.
Yes.
Why do you suppose they did that?
Uh, shocking.
Shocking indeed, but why? Why would they think-
Because it was commercial zoned, and, uh, across the street, they were building a Home Depot and a Walmart, and-
Oh, I see.
-on the main road, and so, um, they didn't think it was practical that, uh, that mobile home park should stay there for, uh, you know, an extended period of time, so they left it open to be redevelopment for commercial development.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, what's your- All right. What's your trade group's position on that?
Uh, they were opposed to it. The owners that have communities in there are continuing to operate their communities. And, you know, the way those ordinance were put in place, they have to go through a rezone, so it takes an extra couple of years to get a rezone to potentially develop. I do not know of anybody in Tumwater that has a community that has tried to go through a rezone or tried to do something else to upgrade their community or to change the use of their community. So I haven't been involved in somebody that's, you know, trying to sell or trying to do something after the moratorium went into place.
Is the downzo- I'm sorry, I'm still, I'm struggling to follow what you said this two-year period was. Is the downzone in effect? Did they pass the land use change?
They passed the land use change, yes.
You had said that-
And to get something out of that land use change, they have to go through a rezone. And I don't know of anybody that has gone through the rezone process to try to develop their park or add spaces to their park or do something else to the existing community.
Well, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm just not-
Sorry.
Yeah, you know, I don't understand the process quite well enough to know what that means. Are you saying that the owners of mobile home parks affected by the downzone have not submitted perm applications to improve their properties, redevelop their properties, when you say they haven't gone through the rezone?
Correct. I do not know of anybody that, after the rezone went into place-
Right.
-has tried to make significant changes in their community to see what the city's reaction would be to increasing density of the existing park, say, or to develop it into something else.
But they passed a downzone, so how could they do that, even if they wanted to?
Because they left the, an opening for a rezone.
Oh.
So you would have to go through a rezoning process to, to change it to another use. So you'd have to go to-
So the owners could apply for a rezone?
Yes.
Okay. That I didn't know.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not saying it'd be approved, but they could apply for a rezone, yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and then I just, I know I want to turn the mic over to others. Appreciate your patience here. What do you think, are you familiar with the Seattle Halla Commission's proposals to the mayor's office from a couple of years ago regarding affordable housing, in particular what they've often referred to as the grand bargain?
Um, I've heard of it. To be honest with you, I do not know it well enough to speak intelligently about all the different proposals in the grand bargain. I understand that it's not working very well from other trade groups, but I do not know it well enough to-
Yeah.
-speak intelligently about it.
Yeah, it's not the law yet, but it's, I think, a proposal that's, it's being challenged and semi-implemented. But if, I'm thinking about Des Moines again, just for, because there, it's sort of analogous to this. It sounds like the city zoned the property to allow for more density but to require a certain number of units be set aside as affordable to those of lower or median, or moderate incomes.
I don't believe that they had that restriction in it. I think that it was the developers' market study that concluded that. I, it's been, I don't know, fifteen years now since I've looked at their, when they upzoned it. But I think it was more the developers.
Okay. I'm going to try and paraphrase what I understand the grand bargain to be, that we will upzone your property so you can have more units per acre on this property, which radically increases the value of the property, but in exchange, you, the owner, or whoever builds it, has to set aside a certain percentage of units to be affordable to those at fifty or seventy percent of median county income. So you don't really lose, the theory is, as a landowner, because you're giving you something you didn't have before, sort of a windfall, in exchange for something that's less valuable, which is requiring set-aside units for more affordable rents. Is that kind of proposal something your, your trade group would accept, be willing to consider reasonable?
Um, we'd certainly take a look at it.
Okay.
Um, I'm not a big community owner to know exactly what somebody that actually owns a property would think about it.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, we're, we don't really represent, I mean, we're a trade organization funded by the park owners, but each park owner and each, you know, person has a different sort of take on it. But I could see something like that, you know, seriously considered and, you know, to make something work, yeah.
Does this strike you as preferable to a moratorium?
Yes.
Or a downzone? Yeah, go ahead, Laurie.
Yeah, so I really want to comment on the moratorium because I think that there's a misconception here about the moratorium.
I was thinking maybe we should talk about that before we start quizzing people, but go ahead.
So the city council obviously has charged the planning commission with looking at ways to preserve existing affordable housing. And they were concerned that there could be actions taken once this discussion started that would prevent full consideration of that option. So they put a moratorium in place, very clearly making folks aware that this is a temporary measure while the planning commission is deciding what they're going to do. So the moratorium is not permanent.
Right.
It's a six-month moratorium to give the planning commission time to evaluate options and make a recommendation.
Right. By definition, a moratorium is temporary. I'm getting at really the downzone, like the one they did in Tumwater.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Right.
Thanks for that. But, okay. Let's, thanks again, Craig, for your patience.
I'll be here so if you have any more questions, feel free.
Yeah, you probably will. Let's move on to the next person who'd like to speak. Laurie?
So Jeremy is also representing the park owners and I'm not sure, Jeremy, feel free to make your comments and then we'll turn it over to Ishval Dickens.
Okay, great. Thank you. I want to answer a couple-
Well, first, Jeremy, I'm sorry to interrupt. Your name and if you could tell us where your park is, the address?
Yes. My name is Jeremy Millard and I'm with Park Preservations. We own a number of parks in, in King County and outside. And we have a park that's not too far away from here called Inglewood East Shores, right on 175th. So it happens to be the largest park here in Kenmore. But we've, we've, we've been through the whole gamut. We've, we've designed, we've built, we've managed these types of communities for, not as long as the Hare family, but, but we're pretty close. So we've, we've had a good foothold in, in this industry. And it's something that, that we're pretty passionate about. Going to Commissioner McDonald's comment about why preserve mobile home parks, and that's ultimately why, why I'm here, because that's what we're about. We're Park Preservations, we're committed to preserving and enhancing mobile home parks. So we appreciate the opportunity to weigh in on both the idea of preserving what's existing, yet at the same time, expanding the inventory, the supply, because there's a real need and I'm going to hopefully address that. But it's pretty sobering. According to, to HUD tables that were released in 2017, Kenmore isn't the only city in which families earning over the median national income of about $56,500 could be considered low-income and in need of federal help to afford housing. That was an article in The Times. In Kenmore, according to the city's website, the median income's $76,920. Now, low-income demographic, you mentioned the fifty to seventy percent, the eighty percent, if we talked about the eighty percent, which is considered low-income, that segment, when we look at a bell curve, we've got the median, eighty percent represents forty percent of the population effectively in Kenmore. The maximum that they can afford in terms of affordability, thirty percent of their income going towards rent-
Right.
-is $1,538. Now, when we look at very low-income segments, that comes down to even nine sixty-two. Now, we look to see who, who are the groups that can cater to these groups? What's the solution? Well, we look to the apartments and the median apartment right now is $1,600 here in, in Kenmore.
How many bedrooms?
That's a two-bedroom.
Okay.
So as we look at the new apartments, maybe they'll come rescue everybody. Go look at Spencer 68, look at Link, you're 2,200 and, and north of that. So there has to be something outside the box. And we would say that that solution happens to be the mobile home park or the manufactured housing community. Well, what's really happening is that people, like in, in Seattle, you've got 40,000 people that are paying above fifty percent towards rent. So they're in a situation where it's unaffordable. And that very predicament is happening here, given the lack of supply of affordable housing. I believe it was Debbie Bent, and I read the unrevised minutes, but I believe she was the one who calculated how many homes are in the, the community in the parks and she came up with 250. Well, as we take 250 and we divide that by the, the housing units of roughly 7,500 here in, in the city, mobile homes, or mobile homes within parks represent only just over three percent. Yet we have that, that forty percent of group that needs affordable housing, yet the mobile home parks can only accommodate three, 3.3 percent. So there, yes, you know, the, the supply curve and the demand curve are, are not, are not really meeting to where you have equilibrium. We've got a, we've got a problem, we've got a crisis. And so we would, we would say that there's some serious catching up that needs to happen, given the supply and the demand issues. So in order to conform to GMA and its guidelines, the city ultimately needs to become ambidextrous. We need, we need to preserve what we have, yet offer incentives so that we can develop more communities. I think we might be the only developer, or the most recent developer, that has developed a manufactured housing community. We did so in Maple Valley. Beautiful community, it won national recognition. We've actually had three of our communities win national awards through the Manufactured Housing Institute. But as far as I know, we might be the last in that, we finished that in 2001. So there's, there's been an absolute dearth and it is sadly a declining industry. And that's not due to the fact of the animal spirits of entrepreneurs, it's, it's cities not looking favorably upon them and providing necessary incentives to make it work and to make the numbers work. So I appreciated, in reading the minutes, Chair Nugent, as well as Laurie Anderson, who was proposing density, transfer credits, transfer of density credits, as well as, I think Sean Martin from one of the apartment groups, rental-
Washington Residential Housing Association.
It was a long acronym, I couldn't remember, yeah.
Yeah.
And he was proposing this concept of, yeah, TDR, as well as tax incentives and more favorable zoning, maybe going into what you're talking about with this mini grand bargain, okay. But I want to just address a few of those because I think, I think two of these lend to the preserving aspect. And then one of them, I want to talk about one idea that might help grow this need that is so desperately missing here for affordable housing. One, tax incentives. One of the largest cost drivers for a park is property taxes. Another one happens to be watered sewer costs. And Commissioner Orange Shaw, Mark, you had asked, what are other cities doing? Interestingly, Bothell, right next door, has in the past provided, recognized that, that there are seniors in certain communities and low income, and they provide a separate tiered rate for those because oftentimes park owners are footing the bill. But in Bothell, as long as you're giving an accounting of who your tenants are and which ones are, are low income, there's accommodation for that. And I thought that was pretty forward-thinking because that's, that's a heavy, heavy cost for, for a park owner. But the, the cost, the issue I'm going to address though is, is the property taxes. There are certain programs that reward developers that keep, as you described, a certain percentage catering to low income. And that often evaporates after a tenure period or whatever, or what have you, however that, that deal was worked. But we'd, we'd ask that that concept be rolled out to mobile home parks. Obviously, focus more on the carrot approach rather than the stick or the hammer. But in fact, Craig kind of stole my thunder when he talked about the forestry, what we see with King County under RCW 8433. If you've got a rural property in the unincorporated King County and you have, you can apply and have a county inspector come out and you can apply to protect certain aspects that create a public benefit, whether it be a watershed, a wetland, just a rural area. And there's a point system to where if you meet a certain criteria, you get a, you're, the property that's within that area will have a fifty percent, sixty, all the way up to a ninety percent reduction based on the public benefit that you're providing. We would say that the public benefit that would be analogous to park owners would be affordable housing. It's, it's, it's a great public benefit. And there could be some type of matrix created where if you're providing at a, at a special, at a certain rate to the low income, the percentage of your park, to the very low income, those making fifty percent, and even to the extremely low income, those making thirty percent of area median income. We should want to incentivize park owners for wanting to do that. And so, again, we, we liked that idea. Transfer of development rights, that was brought up. We would, for example, the property that I mentioned right here that we have on the slough here on 175th, it can accommodate, and some of you might remember Senator Paul Shin, he owned that before us. He was approached by a condo developer that wanted to put 94 units on there. Again, our mission is to preserve and enhance mobile home parks. We, we caught Paul at the right time and, and he was okay, well, after two years of lots of lunches and discussions, it eventually worked out to where we were able to work up something amenable. But our, our density now is 78 units. Unless we want to fill in the, the marina, which I know Samantha, other people here in the city would not want to, would not allow, but we're, we might be pretty much tapped out on our density. But it would be nice if there was an incentive to take the unused density credits. So being that it could be 94, we're presently using 78, and to be able to transfer. Now, as I understand it, the city of Kenmore is not a part of King County's TDR program. San Amish is, Seattle, there's a couple of cities that are Bellevue's, Bellevue is. But so where, where you can join, so therefore it would have to be inter-Kenmore to where you can transfer those. However, it might even be better if there was an inter-local agreement with, with King County and talking with Mike Murphy, that's something who runs the program for King County. They, he I know would, would love to facilitate something like that, to where you could land, you could bank those and either sell or transfer to existing properties. And then finally, okay, so the, both of those speak to preserving. And then, and finally, how, what about creating, you know, this, this gap that is in the market for affordable housing? And presently under, in the Kenmore municipal code, you need an R4 or a greater to put a mobile home park on. It has to be a certain acreage, et cetera. We would, we would ask that the city look to allow mobile home park developers to look at R4 and lower and still get the density that they need to make a park feasible and viable with, which would be roughly 10 to 12 units per acre. And if we could have, if, if we could do something like that, therefore, because as a developer, you're, you're looking at a piece of property and yes, I can develop it for a builder on this R4 site and get four lots, or knowing that lots are 150,000 finished, or I can develop and, and do 10 to 12 lots on a mobile home park when those might be 60,000 finished or whatever. The numbers presently don't match because if you're going to develop a property, you would immediately sell to the highest bidder, which would be, in this case, a builder. So we need to make that more equitable. And an incentive like this, as I see it, would do just that. And then you would have greater supply being generated. So. So, those are my thoughts.
Jeremy, I'd really like you to write this out.
Okay.
Because it's hard for us to take it all in.
Okay.
I think you've got some really good proposals for us to discuss.
Okay.
But I'm not sure any of us could recite it right now.
I was going to quiz you afterwards.
Yeah. I'm going to fail, I'll tell you.
All right.
And I'm trying.
Should I email it to you?
Please.
Okay. I'll email it to you.
Why don't you email them to Lori, and she can forward it to the entire commission? That'd be great.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, no, hold on. If we've got other questions. Please, Scott, you know, the doom and gloom scenario here to your right.
Yeah. Right. The horse and buggy industry. Yes.
Yeah. But you seem to have a more rosier, you know, outlook on it, and you think you can do something with mobile home.
With the city's help.
With the city's help.
Yeah.
And you can improve the infrastructure and such. Is that?
Well, that would be, I'm talking brand-new construction.
Oh, okay.
So I'm not talking about replacing existing. I'm talking, we work with the city to find a vacant piece, and we build from there.
Okay. So what, you've got a place over here on the slough, right?
Yeah. It's pretty much optimized. We can't do much there.
Okay.
So.
I mean, is there the concern that they're just going to get dilapidated as time goes on?
Yeah. That is a concern. And so.
What's the solution to that?
Oh, the solution is, we replace the homes as they need to be, or the tenants replace their homes. So we've got 10 homes on waterfront. And a few of those tenants, I mean, the land, a waterfront lot, is pretty, much more valuable than, is pretty valuable. And so, they're much happier taking their house out and putting a new home there. But what you're, I think, alluding to is infrastructure improvements. And so, what I'm talking about, though, is starting fresh and using a vacant piece as your test case to build a new, which hasn't happened in a long time.
Is there land over here to do that?
Oh, I don't think there's land over there, but I'm thinking, we'd have to look at the plans, look to see what we've got. But obviously, we would need sewer. We'd need to be close to a water main. But we, as long as we can have favorable upzoning on a, what might already be a low units, dwelling units per acre zoning, if we could have an exception in there for a mobile home park developer who's going to provide affordable housing with 80% of the units being, accommodating the very low income, et cetera, something like that, or some type of matrix that's created, I think that could be a winning strategy.
Because those, actually, those mobile home parks over there, they're very nice, actually. They're neat communities.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah.
You had said that the rent at Spencer 68 is $2,200 for a two-bedroom?
$2,195.
Okay.
Right. And their three-bedroom is $2,900.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So, and those are brand-new?
Gorgeous.
They're like?
They're catering to a different market.
What, a year, two years since they were built?
Yeah.
Maybe? And there's a skew toward the new. There's a, you may have heard that phrase, so that there's a premium for new.
Right.
Properties, and after five years, their rents will relatively, relative to the market, they'll go down, because there's not that premium that comes with being new. But.
I haven't seen rents go down yet.
I'm sorry?
I haven't seen rents go down anywhere.
I'm not saying they go down. It's relative to other comparable units.
Okay.
As they age, they rent for less.
Yeah.
For example, landlords who own older buildings charge well less than newer buildings.
Yeah.
That's all I'm getting at. So there's some depreciation effect. Although the market may continue going up, they would go up less, is maybe a better way to look at it, if you're making those assumptions. But Spencer 68 has to set aside a certain percentage of units under a covenant imposed by King County for low-income residents. And I'm wondering what those rents are. Maybe the staff could tell us. But what I'm wondering is, if there is a zoning change that encouraged redevelopment but required setting aside units, could those new affordable units be within striking distance of the rents that current mobile home residents are paying?
No.
So that even though they'd have to, they'd be displaced, but there'd be more units on the market that might be somewhere close to their price range. But if you don't know the numbers, you don't know.
No, no. But typically, what you find in these things, these types of communities, where they have to set aside 20%.
Yeah.
That is all based on the income of the approved tenant. So their income multiplied by 30% becomes their rent.
Well, the covenant, I think, requires the owner of the property to rent those units for no more than that formula.
Right. No, I agree.
Right. So the applicants have, if they can verify, if we can verify their income meets that criteria.
Yeah.
Then they're eligible for that unit. I'm just trying, I'm trying to figure out if and how much there is a gap between what mobile home tenants are paying and what affordable housing units cost.
Yeah. I don't have that information.
Right.
But I would assume there is a chasm there, a gap. I would think mobile home parks are significantly less.
So what is it? I mean, for a two-bedroom mobile home unit.
You'd typically be.
What is their total housing cost outside of utilities, just for the structure and the rent?
I would, $685, maybe?
Total?
Yeah. I'm not counting utilities.
Is that just for renting the lot?
Yeah, lot, and that gives them access to amenities. I think that's.
Okay. They're paying $685 as a base. It's really a ground lease, right?
Yeah. A ground lease.
So they own, and they have had to pay for, this housing structure, this manufactured home that goes on the lot.
Yeah.
So that's the next question. I mean, they're not just paying $685.
Right.
They had to pay thousands of dollars for that structure, right?
Right. And how many years would you amortize the cost of a $10,000 home?
There you go. Right.
You know? It's going to be a little, yeah. So it, so maybe the all-in price is another $250 on top of that, so you're still in the nines.
And that's what I want to get at.
I think you're still going to be significantly less.
Because you're saying that 70% or 80% of median county income is $1,500.
Yeah.
And they're at the kind of the 900 range, if you're amortizing.
Yeah. Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
The other number that you need to throw in there is, older homes are really inefficient, so they're going to have extremely high energy costs.
Right.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So, you know, and that's what I'm trying to wonder, is just how, there's going to be some displacement. There's always some displacement when there's new development. But the bigger picture is, well, if there's that many more units, because you're just, you're just horizontal.
Right.
Right? You've got a big parcel.
Yeah.
You can't go up. There's no upside to going up. It may be zoned for you to do that.
Yeah.
With much more density. But if somebody redeveloped, they could put three times or four times the number of units on that property. And there'd be that much more inventory, which would relieve pressure on prices throughout the community, not just for the mobile home park owned residents, but for other people looking for more affordable housing. So you maybe could, I'm thinking, maybe we could balance both interests. We don't want to displace people, but maybe we can come close to replacing what they had with something close. In fact, it'd probably be a step up. I mean, a new apartment.
Yeah.
Is going to be a more desirable housing unit than the 50-year-old double-wide on the lot.
Yeah.
So, yeah, they'd pay more, but they'd get more. So I'm just trying to think how we can balance the competing interests on this.
Rather than replace, though, we would look to new.
You'd go, you'd build a new park somewhere else.
New parks, yeah.
Right.
And I think to say that a new apartment is more desirable than a double-wide is kind of, I would say it's a leading statement, that in fact, the ability to have two bedrooms in a larger detached unit with some outdoor space has different values than an apartment.
I don't know. I said may.
Yeah.
May be more desirable.
Right.
Certainly, as we've already seen, as the market bears out, there is a premium for new properties.
Right.
So presumably, that would apply to the new apartment. Scott? I just want to follow up on this new developments of manufactured housing parks. So you think that that's possible here in Kenmore?
Oh.
With the properly gauged property taxes, not?
Zoning.
And zoning.
Yeah. I think if the zoning is right, I think we can create the climate that would work. But, yeah, yeah.
I mean, is that something your company would be interested in?
Yeah, absolutely. If we had every, if the stars could align on these issues we're talking about, I think so.
Have you looked, do you know what the?
Well, it does, what we're talking about is hypothetical right now. It doesn't exist. So, no, we haven't started searching for lot, for vacant land, knowing that presently, how the code is, what I'm proposing doesn't exist. So if it did exist, yeah, we would be interested.
And these be the new units that have good energy savings and all that stuff?
Yeah. Yeah.
I would agree with that, that if there was a model that, let's say, just so that we all have the same picture, a tiny home community that was, you know, a dozen, couple-dozen homes, had a little, you know, mini storage, a little clubhouse, or something like that, it would also have demand, because the demand for the old, you know, inefficient double-wide is limited. That might bring sort of the different type of clientele. And if it was affordable and it had the right tax incentives, I mean, that might be the future model for the industry going forward. Because I think the industry, long-term, has got great success. Just right now, the model that we have isn't, was good 20, 30 years ago, but doesn't work very well today in urban areas.
You know, I have a nagging question, Craig, because you're saying, it was great 30 years ago, it doesn't work today, our primary problem is we can't upgrade the infrastructure because it would displace all the tenants for at least a period of time. But why wouldn't that have been the case 30 years ago?
Because it was built on the edge of town, and land was cheap, and you could build it out there, and people wanted to live there.
Yeah, but the infrastructure's going to age.
Yeah.
I mean, at some point, you're going to hit that dilemma where, okay, this is failing, but I don't want to lose all my rent.
It hadn't aged yet. It was still new.
Pardon?
It was still new. It was still.
Okay. Let's say it's 50, 100 years old. At some point, isn't that problem always going to come up?
You're right. It's always going to come up.
Right.
Yes.
So that's just been an endemic problem with the mobile home park.
Yes.
Model. Okay.
Yes.
I just, I got a little bit of different view. I mean, they're tearing up the streets of Kirkland 24/7, and it's all around million-dollar homes. And so, they need new infrastructure as well. And the neat thing about, you know, the mobile home parks is that it is a community. You know, in Chicago, when they put up the low-income housing, and there were just ghettos in buildings. And so, you know, that's, that's the benefit of mobile home parks, is because it is a community. And so I think there's a value in that versus an apartment complex where you never, you see your neighbor going down the elevator, and that's it. Well, I'm not saying it's good or bad. I'm just saying this problem with infrastructure. I'm just. Seems to exist regardless. It doesn't make mobile homes good, bad, or indifferent. I'm just saying, how did they get around it before? It sounds like they didn't. It's just something that comes with the territory. Sure. I just want to put out there that there's, it's a neat kind of lifestyle that has value. And I think that it's there, and it shouldn't be ignored. And you make great points on, you know, the economics of it, so. Okay. No, I appreciate that. Thanks. Jeremy, thanks so much.
Yes.
That was a very good presentation. Who do we have next?
So, Ishbel Dickens is here, and she's going to introduce herself and maybe give a little bit of background in representing mobile home park homeowners.
Is it always on?
I can hear it. Welcome, Ishbel.
I don't know. Is that it?
There should be a light.
This one doesn't have a light. Here, let's give you a different one. How about that?
Yeah, this one's on.
There you go.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all this evening. It's 8:25, so do I get an hour as well as they got? Just to make it fair.
Tell you what, no, I'm going to make it fair. Whether you get enough time tonight or not, you're welcome to come back.
All right. Appreciate that.
You'll get your time.
Okay. So I have been working with manufactured homeowners for more than 30 years. And I actually went to law school to get my degree so that I could be as strong an advocate as possible for people who own their homes but who rent the land under them and are some of the most vulnerable homeowners in the country. I've worked in legal services in Washington State, and for five and a half years, I was the executive director of the National Manufactured Homeowners Association. I tried to retire last year. That didn't work, so I'm now doing sort of independent consulting work, working with the state homeowners association here in Washington. And I also have a couple of contracts with the city of Boulder and the city of Denver, who care about their homeowners down there.
Ishbel, let me get this straight. You were the executive director for a trade group for mobile home park owners?
The homeowners.
Okay.
The National Manufactured Homeowners Association. For the homeowners.
The, for the tenants who own the structure on the.
Yeah. I call them homeowners.
Supposed to the park owners.
They're homeowners. They own homes.
All right.
Right? They're not tenants. They're homeowners. And they have that stability.
Terminology is very similar on both sides.
It is. So I try to be careful and make sure I say the right words.
Well, that's why I'm trying to be clear.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So I've been, I've been working with this population for a long time, and they are very, very dear to my heart, obviously. I wouldn't be doing it for 30 years if I wasn't passionate about their issues and their struggles. The biggest problems I see for manufactured homeowners is their lack of security of tenure. They own a home. That home may have cost them anything from $10,000 to $80,000. But regardless of the cost, they could be asked to move it tomorrow by being given a notice that the park will close or change its use in 12 months. The homes are bought with chattel, so the interest rate is much higher than a mortgage. The amortization period is much shorter. And yes, they do have those costs over and above the rent that they pay for their land. Manufactured home living is a great option for young families just starting out on the homeownership ladder, and also for seniors who've lost a partner, whose families have grown, but who want to live independently in their own homes with their little garden, space for their little pet, and who don't want apartment living, who do want to have that, you know, their own four walls and not have people banging up above them or below them. And it's ownership. It's affordable homeownership in terms of owning that home, because even a brand-new manufactured home, a two-bedroom, two-bath manufactured home is going to be cheaper than a site-built home of that same footage. So there are, as Craig mentioned, actually, there are about 1,600 manufactured housing communities in the state of Washington. A lot of them just haven't registered with the Department of Licensing as they're required to do, but our records show that there are about 1,600. We have worked hard to try to ensure long-term stability and security of tenure for homeowners. There are various jurisdictions in the state that have already passed manufactured housing community zoning ordinances. You mentioned Tom Water. There's also Lynwood, Marysville, Spokane, and Snohomish County. Bothell and Renton have had mobile home park zones since the '60s, so this is not something new that you're looking at. The city of Tom Water was, their ordinance, which was passed in 2008, were challenged by MHCW, by Craig's Industry Group. It was challenged at the, at the growth management level and in federal court. The Ninth Circuit ruled that the city of Tom Water did indeed have the power to zone up or down. And that is something that you are able to do at the local level. I don't actually like to call it a downzone, because you're still, you're protecting housing. You're protecting where people live. Is there a reason I like a downzone? Makes it sound derogatory or negative, and it's not.[1703.01] A rezone, I like, a downzone makes it sound derogatory or negative, and it's not, it's protecting existing housing, and it's always cheaper to protect existing than to replace with new. And while older houses are definitely less energy-efficient than the new ones being built today, there are ways to replace, there's a bill before the federal government right now that would incentivize people with pre-HUD code homes to replace them with new Energy Star homes. Representative Merkel, from Merkel, not Merkel, anyone, Ellison, Representative Ellison in Minnesota, thank you, has introduced that bill. And so, there's, there are policies at the state and the local and the national level to help preserve manufactured housing. The homeowners association in Washington State have been working with Representative McBride on an opportunity to purchase bill, and this would allow nonprofits, housing authorities, community land trusts to purchase communities that are for sale. The law, the bill doesn't require the landlord to sell to the nonprofit, but if they do, there's an incentive to do so. There's currently, on the state books, a real estate excise tax exemption, so if the community owner sells to a nonprofit or to the residents, they're currently exempt from paying the real estate excise tax on that sale, so that's pretty nice, it's a little bit of an incentive. As far as voluntary incentives go, the city of Lynwood tried that for a while, they said to the community owners there, if you will promise to keep your community open for five years, that was all, just keep it open for five years, we will ensure that you are given a break on the utility bills, and we'll work with the county on getting a break on the property taxes. And none of the community owners accepted or agreed to that voluntary zoning, so ultimately, Lynwood just went ahead and mandated that they would be zoned as manufactured housing communities. That's not the only thing that they could, that you can use the land for, Tomwater has, I think, about twenty-two different uses in their mobile home park zone, as does Snohomish County, so there's a list of different options, but, you know, zoning the land to be operated as a mobile home park just allows the community owner to continue operating and running their very successful businesses. People who buy manufactured housing communities are doing so because they're profitable. No one is buying a manufactured housing community to run at a loss, they're not charitable organizations, they're very profitable businesses, because you don't have to care for the homes, that's the homeowner's responsibility. All you're doing is whatever you need to do or choose to do in terms of land, you know, beautiful trees, landscaping, maintenance, and I would argue, as Mr. McDonald did, that infrastructure can happen without displacing the homes. I've just come from Scotland, and outside my mom's condo there, the whole road is being dug up, but they're not moving her condo to do it, and so, and why shouldn't community owners, like apartment landlords, be required to maintain the infrastructure? I'm sure you have slumlord ordinances here for apartment owners, and somehow manufactured community owners sort of slip under that radar and aren't held to quite the same standards in terms of infrastructure and health and safety, so just something to think about. I mean, there was one community not too far from here that was closed many, many years ago now because of raw sewage bubbing up to the surface, and I've been to a community in Forks where that was happening. So, the people behind me are good community owners, I'm not talking about them as individuals, but there are bad apples out there, of course there are, and the, to the extent that you can make sure that the manufactured housing communities within your jurisdiction are properly operating and maintained, you're doing everyone a huge service, and I would encourage that. So, I do know a little bit about the friendly village, you mentioned that, King County Housing Authority purchasing friendly village, and that was, you know, a community owner who was elderly, I believe, and just wanted to ensure that, that his customers, if you want to call them that, the homeowners in his community did have that security of tenure, did have that reassurance that the land under their homes was not going to be sold, because most often, when that land is sold, the homeowners lose their homes. They're not mobile in any sense of the word, they're mobile only in the fact that you move them from a factory to the land, they're not intended to move anywhere else. So when people, homeowners are displaced from communities these days, their homes are moving to the dump, for the most part, they're losing all of their equity in their homes, they have nothing to take with them, they're not being relocated, they're having to find places to live, some of them may become homeless or live, go back and live with family members, but, and the state does have a relocation assistance program, but that only covers the cost of moving the home out off the land to the dump, it doesn't give them any money whatsoever to put towards a first, last, and deposit even on a rental, it's shocking. And there are other jurisdictions in the country where much more is done to help homeowners who are being displaced, not in this state, unfortunately. So when a community closes, those homeowners will no longer be homeowners, they will probably swell the waiting lists of subsidized housing, because they can't afford to go anywhere else. A lot of them are at thirty percent area median income or below, so they can't even afford affordable housing units that are made for sixty percent AMI, they're being completely shut out of the market. And while I'm not suggesting that manufactured housing community owners need to, you know, subsidize affordable housing, they don't, the rents are what people can pay, and the rents go up every year, and some people are being economically evicted because they can no longer afford to live in the communities where they have homes. There are several communities where there are a lot of homes for sale because the homeowners just cannot afford the rent, so that's part of the reason that we're, it's a dying market. I heard one, the attorney who represents MHCW, state before city council in Lynwood several years ago, that he would never advise anyone to move into a manufactured housing community, and that was the attorney for the park owners, because he knew how vulnerable the situation was for people who do that, and that's the reality. And now that the economy's on the upswing, more and more communities will close because they're in the path of development. I heard one community owner testify in Olympia several years ago, saying, yes, I absolutely buy communities in the path of development, I look to where, see where the development's going, I deliberately buy communities there, because I know that in ten years' time, I can sell that land for a huge profit, and there goes the neighborhood. And that's, that's the reality we're living with, and so more and more communities will be starting to close now, as land becomes scarce and more valuable, for whether it's for condo building, whether it's for transit-oriented development, whether it's for a big-box store, that's what we're looking at. So I applaud the moratorium, I know that means you have six months to do some very, very hard work to look at options to help preserve the communities in your, in your city, but I would urge you to seriously consider a mobile home park zone, as other jurisdictions have and are continuing to do, and I'd be happy to share with you the Tomwater or Snohomish Counties ordinances, because I think they're, they're very good, they're very well thought out. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thanks, Ishbel, you're a good advocate. Carol, do you have some questions or comments?
That is the dichotomy, as, as a city looking at this, we definitely want to preserve affordable housing, but you just said that, you know, you wouldn't advocate, you would advocate for the homeowner, but if you were wanting to create a new mobile home park, would you advocate people becoming, participating in that community? We had that opportunity this summer, my elderly mother-in-law is downsizing off her one-acre home in Lake Forest Park, and she looked at mobile homes, because she knows that she has this much time, not forty years, right, she hopes it's twenty, but who knows, right? But she liked the idea of living in a community rather than, she said, I don't want to get put in a box and shelved in a condo.
Right.
Those are the words she said, but that is what she did, because when she went out and looked at mobile home parks and did the numbers, she just said, you know, it's not a good investment, and it's not secure.
Right.
And I don't know what's going to happen, and I need to feel safe.
Yeah, no, that's absolutely right.
You know, so it is a really hard issue for a city to look in the short term, you know, we already have this affordable housing, right?
Right.
So, it behooves us to not eliminate housing that already exists in this climate, but whether or not we want to create new mobile home housing, and then how do we protect the homeowners that live in the mobile home parks with whatever ordinances we create to preserve the parks?
Right.
Because you don't want to create an unintended consequence.
Sure.
So, it's really good to be able to hear your advocacy for homeowners, you know, we want to advocate for the landowners too.
Right.
But how do you mitigate the gap?
Yeah, so, if I could respond to that, MHCW brought a bill to Olympia last year, and they've brought it in the past, asking that they be able to build new manufactured housing communities outside of urban growth areas. And my response has been, I would support that if, and I have three conditions, if the land is zoned as a mobile home park, if the rents stay reasonable, some, you know, parallel to CPI or something like that, and if the community owner wants to sell the land, that they will sell it to a nonprofit or to the residents, because that's the only way that the homeowners can afford to live there. I would never, just blanket statement, support new communities without some mitigation for the homeowners, some security that they can stay there, afford to stay there, and have the security of tenure.
Yeah.
Because why bother, why, why buy that beautiful, brand-new, energy-efficient home which is out there, and then not be able to afford to live there, or in five or ten years' time, be told, oh, now that the city has grown, or now that we've got rapid transit in the area, we're going to turn this into condos or hotels or whatever. So, with those three criteria, I would support new communities. You.
Who else?
So, I was sort of playing devil's advocate with Scott and Jeremy to some extent, you know, I'd like to do that with you, I don't want to be rude, but there's, I can see a couple sides to this, and I, I hear your, your explanation of the predicament that mobile park, home park owners slash tenants are in. And I, I don't, I mean, it seems to me a really risky proposition on the front end. Like you said, there was an attorney for the mobile park owners, who said, I would never advise somebody to buy and invest in a mobile home and a park.
Right.
Would you, would you agree with that?
Yeah, I would. Why would you, that, like Ms. Baker's mother, she saw very clearly why.
Right.
And she may have been in the fortunate position that she didn't have to make a decision right there, not everyone's like that. Some people have to make decisions about where they're going to live without really taking into account what it means for the long term, and a lot of seniors in particular who don't maybe have the family to help advise them, see it as a, they want that sense of community, because it really does, I mean, it's, I call it gated communities for low-income families. A lot of your neighbors and friends within the community will, will perform basically social services for free, you know, they'll, they'll take you to your doctor's appointments, they'll buy your groceries when you're laid up, I mean, there's, there is that sense of community that you don't necessarily get in a, an avenue with site-built homes or in an apartment building, so there is a lot of that informal taking care of each other that you don't get elsewhere, but at what cost in other ways?
Right, although I'm not sure, conceptually, I don't see why an apartment building couldn't be as community or have a sense of community any less than mobile home parks.
I think-
You see, you know, yours got saying, oh, you're going down the elevator, and that's it, you know, you're in parking, you're lobby, there's a community center, there's a playground, there's a rooftop, there's a gym, there's a, I mean, there are a lot of, I mean, even if you didn't have all those things, you'd see people every day, like you do at the mobile home park.
It's, yeah.
But I, I mean, I know it's a different product, but I don't see why there's necessarily more, you know, this intangible here than there would be in an apartment complex.
Yeah, it could be part of the ownership piece.
Yeah.
You know, just that pride of ownership in your home, you've got the garden, there's more sort of open space to be out and be seen and see your neighbors that you don't have in an apartment, things, I mean, there's, there's a lot of intangibles.
That's a good point, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, did you want to say something, Scott?
Well, you suggest something that's tantamount to rent control almost, that's got a lot of problems, and is there a way that, is there some middle, middle ground for, you know, building parks and, and, well, they, they obviously worked for, you know, forty, fifty years, and there was no problem with the rents going so high that they, that they had to leave until this round of escalation of property, you know, a double-digit increase in, in property values, and that's really what's pushing, pushing more now, but, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a model that worked for many, many, many years without all the things that you say that it's, it's going to be a disaster if you don't have these three conditions, and one of them seems to be kind of like rent control.
Not, not, not really rent control, it's, I mean, just tied to CPI, it's still increasing every year, it's not, and the CPI, who knows what that could be, it could be two percent, it could be three percent, whatever, but as someone who cares about the homeowners and their equity in their homes and their ability to continue living in their homes, and seeing that people are not able to afford the rents, and I mean, anytime you go into a manufactured housing community, the first thing you're going to hear is the rents are going too high, the rents are going too high, that, I mean, that's, that's what we hear every, that's the biggest concern of anyone that I've ever met living in a manufactured housing community.
Everybody, and-
Right, but they don't have, if you're living in an apartment and the rents are going up, or if you're living in an apartment and the utilities are failing, it's reasonably easy to move. If you're owning a home and living in a community where you can't afford to live, you're stuck there, you can't just get up and move, you can't sell your home, you may still be owing money on it, no one is going to buy it because the rents are going so high, you are as vulnerable as can be and basically a prisoner in your own home with little or no option as to what else you can do, and that's the big scary part for people, that they just can't simply leave.
If you're coming and buying an old mobile home because the person's leaving, that's endemic in the price of it, it's going to be lower than it would be if you owned your own property because of that fear that the rents could go so high, so-
Right.
They're getting in cheaper than they would ordinarily do if they owned the fee simple, so-
Right.
I, you know, I, I just kind of, I challenge that, that part of your statement.
Well, so, in Illinois, for instance, because that is an issue, because people move into manufactured housing communities without being fully aware of what's happened before and what might happen in the future, in Illinois, the landlords have to provide the homeowners with a rental history, what does the rent be like for the past five years, and what might it be like for the next five years, to give them a sense of what, of what's going on there, to say, hey, can you afford it going forward? I noticed it's gone up fifty dollars a month, you know, ten years ago, and then the last two years, it's gone up a hundred dollars a month, projects, rejecting that out to the future, can I really afford in five years' time to potentially be paying two hundred dollars more a month than what I'm paying now? And so, just, people just don't have that sense of what's maybe hitting them around the corner, and so-
That's probably a good idea, it's like a condominium declaration-
Right.
Are you going to check out the, you know, are they solvent, are they going to replace all the-
Right. I think that's a great idea, I'm suspecting that the folks behind me would not support that if we brought that to the legislature, though.
You know, again, I'm trying to look at both sides of this, and Scott brought up a couple of interesting points, and, and you acknowledge, this is a very risky housing decision. You buy this structure, you put it on a lot, you don't own the lot, the rents can go up, you might lose the ability to move your structure, it might be very difficult, it might not be a place that's convenient for you to move it, and people made those choices, and now they're very vulnerable, and now, it's like you're, you're saying, well, we got to subsidize them to comp, to mitigate the, the impact of the choices they made, the risky choices. And, I know, I have some sympathy for that, but on the other hand, you're saying to all these other people in the community, or particularly the, the mobile home park owners, you got to mitigate the choice we made, you got to mitigate, you got to do something to reduce the burden of the choice I made. So, I mean, there's a bit of an equity problem there, to say, you, you bear some of the burden from my choices. It's almost like you could say, people buy their property in a flood plain, people buy their property in Houston, you know, and there's no good seawall, or people buy property in a place where there's trees all around them, or like the Oso where the landslide hit, and they take these big risks, and bad, bad things can happen when there's risk, and they say, oh, you know, somebody else should pay for that. So, that's, you know, I'm not saying ignore these people, I'm trying to think of a way to balance competing interests here, but your, your position seems to indicate, we insist on compensation and mitigation and laws and protection to take away the risk that they undertook knowingly, or should have known, known or should have known, I mean, maybe they didn't, but, you know, anybody could argue that, gee, I didn't know that driving a car at three hundred miles an hour might lead to my death, or something like that, I mean, at some level, people have to be accountable and responsible for their choices.
Sure, and I just, that brings to mind a, a couple in Pierce County who lived in a manufactured housing community and wanted to move into a nicer one, and looked at a couple in the area, and asked, you know, tried to do the due diligence, asked the managers, you know, is there any chance this community's going to close or be sold anytime soon, and were reassured that it was not, moved in in early December, and then along with their Christmas card, got their twelve-month notice that it was going to close.
Right, which could happen to anybody, it could happen to somebody who bought a defective- house. It could happen to somebody who bought an apartment that they thought was going to be great, and they were told the rent wouldn't go up so much, and boom, it went way up.
Right.
Or it got sold and somebody redeveloped and had moved.
So I'm not, yeah, and I'm not asking for compensation or mitigation. I'm just asking for a fair value, that if you move in, you're guaranteed some security of tenure beyond 12 months. If you own a home, you buy a home, you're usually expecting to live there for more than 12 months. It would be lovely if people had that security.
It would.
And that's one, and that's what-
It would be lovely if everybody owned their own property and they didn't face rent hikes from year to year. If I rented a place for X dollars and I knew I wouldn't go up. So the only people that are really protected from housing appreciation are the people who own their homes.
Yeah, that's true.
So that's always the best, best scenario. I agree with that. I think what you're saying is we ought to pass laws that take that risk away from people at this end of the housing sector.
Well, and, and not to the detriment of anyone else either, because they can, because the landlord can still raise the rent as much as they want once a year, as allowed by law, and the homeowner has to pay it. We're not saying anything about that. And the landlord gets to continue operating what is a very profitable business. We're not saying that they can't do that. And in Tom Water, after the zoning ordinance was changed there, it didn't impact the sale of, of the community. There's been at least one sale of a community in Tom Water after the zoning ordinance went into effect, and that community owner made a pretty nice profit on that deal. So we're not requiring the landlords to do much of anything beyond continue to collect the rent and operate a community and have homeowners pay their rent and follow the rules.
What were those three conditions to allowing new home, mobile home parks? Wasn't it a cap rent to cost of living expenses?
That it be zoned as a mobile, that it be zoned as a mobile home park.
Yeah.
Can you say that a lot more?
Sorry. That it be zoned as a mobile home park, manufactured housing community.
Which means no other use.
No, it can be the simi, I mean, any of the jurisdictions in this state who have passed manufactured housing community zones list about 20 uses. So it's not specific to that. That's one of the uses in, in any of the zones that currently exist.
But don't any of the other uses displace the tenants?
Yes, they do, but you can't spot zone, and you can't just do a specific zone like that. Or maybe you could if it was a new community, because the landlord would know right off the bat what he was getting. So you might be able to do it there, I'm not sure. Because of that, if they knew going in that that's what it was going to be and nothing else, and they make a choice about whether they want to develop that one or not.
Right. So this is one of my problems with this, is, is somebody bought, like these gentlemen here or other people, and they invested in low-income housing and said, I want to buy this-
No, they didn't invest in low-income housing. They bought some land, and people who can afford to put a, a lower-cost home on that land did that.
They chose to use it, though. They just chose to use their land in that way, to provide this lower-cost form of housing to people. And they thought it was a good business proposition. Right. And in fact, if there were no profit, I mean, you talk a lot about profit, profit, like it's a negative thing, but that's what induced the investment in the first place to create this community.
Yeah, it's a business. It's a business, yeah.
So that's a good thing, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not disagreeing.
Okay. So it attracted, the land attracted this investment. Somebody followed through, and they said, I'm going to lease these lots, and we'll have, you know, modest rent, and they can live there and all this. And you're saying, but now we're going to say you can't use it in the ways that it could have been used at the time you bought the property. You can't build 300 apartment buildings on it, because that would improve the property, and it would cost more rent, and it would displace these people. Well, that comes as a big shock to the person who put the money in, thinking, well, I'd like to use it for this modest rent property, purpose for a while, but maybe I'll improve it later, just like any of us who own a house, and think, you know, I bought a fixer. I bought a modest house, it's what I could afford, but I have a plan. Someday, I'm going to turn that into a really nice lot. And most of the time, cities like that kind of thing. It's a beautiful house, it's bigger, it's nicer, it's more efficient, this kind of thing. You know, we try to encourage improvement of property throughout the city by the private sector. But you're saying, well, no, we shouldn't want that. We should want it to stay the same, and just so it's not as expensive. And if that means that the owner of the property loses a bunch of money that they thought at the time they made this investment, which helped people of modest income, they should lose that.
But you don't legislate on the speculative market. You don't, any, that's the risk that they take.
Every investor does.
Everyone takes risk.
Right.
So that's their risk.
Just like the people who move into the house by buying a home and not having the-
I might have a go, an oil well underneath my home, but because I'm in a residential zone, I can't, I can't turn it into a commercial venture and get the oil out underneath my house. It's the same kind of thing. Your zones-
No, it's not the same. It's not the same, because the zoning of the property, when the investor bought it, allowed for the development. The zoning of my house, that my single-family residence, is not to put a 50-story building on it.
Right.
I've accepted that.
So I, I want to just make one comment, just to step back a little bit and talk about why we're looking at this zoning. The city has interest in a variety of things. They have an interest in environmental protection. And so they put restrictions on properties to preserve wetlands and provide stream buffers and that kind of thing. Likewise, you know, the, the city has rules about how much light and air there should be perhaps between buildings in certain areas. So they put in place zoning to provide setbacks and that type of thing. So a public good that the city is thinking about is affordable housing. I, I don't think I've heard anyone say that the cost of housing is not an issue. I think it is an issue. And the way they are looking at it is, is there a benefit to preserving existing affordable housing, which will always be, always be less expensive than new housing? So the idea that we should not look at zoning to address a public good called affordable housing doesn't fit with a pattern of historically zoning for things that the community is concerned about. I think that's a very natural reaction. And I think that market forces are not and have never been the only thing that the city addresses.
Well, of course not. I mean, like I said, we all have limits on the uses of our property.
Right.
The question is, does it change midstream in a major way that burdens the people who made the investment?
I think, yeah. I think we do it all the time with zoning. I think we absolutely do. I'm reminded of the guy who wanted to do the auto sales in the regional business zone. He was really upset-
Right.
-about the fact that he could no longer do auto sales. That totally impacted his investment.
Yes. And we increased the density radically, so his property was worth far more after our rezone than it was before.
But not what he wanted.
So he didn't lose any monetary value in his property. In fact, he, he reaped a windfall.
Yeah.
This is the opposite, the kind of proposal that we're talking, that you're talking about. It's not just wetlands and environmental protection. It's, I think, what Scott said. It's a fact, it's a tantamount to rent control. Don't improve your property so you can charge more money, because we want people to be able to afford what it is right, right now. So instead of saying, we're going to cap all the rents, we're going to say, you can't improve.
Well, I think what we have been talking about, at least at the last meeting, was trying to look at this in the, in a way that might balance these competing interests.
Exactly.
And I think that some of the strategies you heard tonight, TDRs are certainly one way. And, and I hope that we're going to be looking at different scenarios that might try to strike a balance. So I, I mean, I think there is room here for both perspectives, but I, I would not want us to be in, in a position that said, from the staff's perspective, that the property rights are more important than the rights or the public interest in providing affordable housing.
Laurie, I'm playing, as I said to Ishbal right away, I'm going to play devil's advocate here. I played it with the other side of, of the, the owner's side of this argument, too. But I want to know, am I missing something here? Is there some point, you know, economic or public benefit or something else that I'm missing here? So I am trying to flush it out. She is a good advocate. She's making some very good points. We are sympathetic to the people living there and the displacement that they would incur if there were this, if there were redevelopment. So I, I've said from the start that I think our goal is to balance those competing interests. Go ahead, Scott.
Well, I just wanted the two and three, because I got one.
Oh, sorry.
[laughing]
You sound like my law prof, my law professor would always say, there are three issues, and then he would never give us a third one. So appreciate that. That if the community owner wanted to sell, that the resident, the homeowners and/or nonprofit would have the opportunity to make an offer first, so that it would continue to be a manufactured housing community. And then-
Is that, that first right of refusal?
Yeah, opportunity to purchase is, is how I like to call it. The right of, the right of first refusal-
Right of first opportunity.
-was struck down by the Supreme Court in 2000. So it's opportunity to purchase. And then the third one was that the rent be tied to CPI or some other kind of formula. And there are, there are communities in Washington State where homeowners do have long-term leases and where the, the, the rent is ca, is, you know, tied to CPI. So that already exists in Washington State. That's not my idea. I've, I've seen it in some of the, of the rental agreements out there.
Hi, Ishbal. Could I-
Go ahead, Mike.
Sorry. You raised those three points as conditions you would like to see if the state were to allow new manufactured housing communities outside the UGA.
Right.
You weren't talking about that inside Kenmore.
No, that was just, that was just what we were talking about at, at the state level outside UGA. Yeah, thanks for clarifying that.
I didn't want anybody to confuse that with what you might have recommended for-
Urban growth areas.
Urban growth areas.
Yeah.
Right. So she's talking about new communities in rural areas.
Yeah.
I didn't want anybody to confuse that with what she was suggesting for Kenmore.
Where I, just, a little bit, because, you know, you want outside the growth, the urban area, and it's, it's zoned residential, but not at the density that apartment, but one that is comparable to a mobile home park, then that way, then doesn't that solve a problem?
Solve what problem?
The, of, of, afraid developers come in and tear it down and put up a big building.
Well, a long time ago, the city of Seattle's boundaries were 85th, right?
Yep.
And then as the city grew, and there were four manufactured housing communities north of 85th, they're all, you know, Lowe's or Costco or, or whatever now. So at some point in the future, I'm pretty sure, given our growth rate here, that those boundaries are going to go out, and that land is going to become much more valuable for, potentially for some other purpose. So that's one, that's one issue around the long-term security. But the other issue is around, you know, a landlord wanting to sell and the homeowners needing, again, to have that security. They bought a beautiful new home to put in this new community. They want to know that that's, that they're going to have value in that home for 40 years and, or longer, and some, you know, potential benefit to pass on to their heirs. So they don't, they don't want, you know, they want to know that if the landlord's going to sell, let's make sure that the homeowners themselves and a co-op like a rock, and I've helped two communities be, become rocks in Washington State, that they can then buy the land so they can continue to enjoy that security of tenure with that new home. So that's, that's why regardless of whether it's, you know, if it's out there, I, I get what you're saying, that it's out there, it's not going to become anything else. But at some point, it could, as has happened in the past.
And I think that's exactly what's happened to all the communities around Seattle. So I, my, my sense is, these mobile home communities in Kenmore, they're what, 50 years old? More? They were the outside, you know, they were in the outskirts out here, right?
Right, right.
Nobody's stopping in Kenmore. They're driving on to some other place. I mean, it wasn't a city per se. Really, it wasn't, you know, it was a neighborhood until 1998 and became a city then. And you could say, but I'm sure there are mobile home parks in Monroe, and they're going to go through this, too. And their mobile home parks keep going, you know, somewhere way out, Oso, you know, somewhere way out there. They're going to be concrete, you know, they're going to be experiencing some degree of development and appreciation with the land. And that's, so when those people rented mobile home lots and put their new home on there, it was a real, it, you know, foreseeably, it was a pretty good place to be, like Scott's saying. Let's go pick out a place, remove from a lot of growth and development appreciation, we'll put the mobile home park there. So that's happened. We've had our 50 years. We've had the expansion of the urban boundaries. We've had economic growth. We've had job growth. And that's what's causing the crunch, because all these people coming in for the new jobs are bidding up the prices of houses. They all need someplace to live.
Right.
And your, you know, constituents are caught in that. But it was, it was a risk that was, that existed, and it's just accelerated in recent years because of job growth and housing appreciation. That's the thing. But you could say that about low-income residents in apartments throughout this community, up and down Puget Sound. And they're all in a bind because they don't own, they just rent.
But I'm encouraged that, yeah, I'm encouraged to hear, you know, Jeremy say that they, that they want to continue to preserve.
Yeah.
Because that, that's good, because there are others who are definitely looking for the speculative market to sell.
Right.
Like the folks in Des Moines, and I'm working with, it's in C-TAG right now. There's a lot of development going on. A lot of communities are closing. And so the more that we can preserve, and, and I think it helps the jurisdictions meet their GMA requirements, preserve existing housing, provide a variety of housing choices for all economic sectors of the population. That's what preserving manufactured housing communities allows a city to do. Look, we're, we're, no, no net loss of affordable housing here.
What about what I, what I discussed with the owners? And that is a grand bargain, a proposal or a zoning that would allow for redevelopment, far more units on the property than currently are allowed. But a number of those units are set aside and required to rent at a certain price point, you know, for lower and moderate-income families. Is that something that you and your constituents, how would you respond to that?
I think, I think that works when you're talking about apartments.
Yeah.
Where you've got one owner of the apartment and they're renting out units. And I'm not sure that it, you can transfer that directly to a manufactured housing community where you have individual homeowners and homes that the landlord doesn't own. And so, um, it would be a hard, it would be a more difficult math, I guess, in terms of how that works.
Well, it's a different product. It's a different product. I'm not saying we're going to preserve. I'm saying the zoning allows, but require, allows the redevelopment into apartments.
Mm-hmm.
So you get 300 units instead of 70.
Right.
Or whatever, 58 or whatever they have in a current mobile home park. Way more housing is available suddenly in this community. And you say, a certain percentage, a quarter, a half, three-quarters, something like that, have to be rented at no more than 50% of King County median income. So that's really affordable, you know? And that's a covenant that stays with the property, or a zoning requirement that stays with the property. That's more security than what the mobile home park tenants have right now. So looking at that mod, looking at, okay, we are talking about apartments, because they can go vertical and mobile homes can't, and so you can have far more density. How would you, I'm thinking about the people that currently live in the mobile home parks, how would they respond to that opportunity?
I think it's still a hard one.
Yeah.
If you've got, I mean, if you, so you put in more units, and some have to be rented at, let's say, $500 a month, and some have to be rented at $800 a month, and some have to be rented at $1,000 a month. If you own a home that's on a piece of property that is being rented for $1,000 a month, do you have any additional benefit as opposed to the person who's renting at 500? Are you on the waterfront property as opposed to buy the, you know, the, the storage units or the garbage can? I mean, right? I mean, wouldn't you think that there would need to be some kind of set off in terms of you paying twice as much rent as somebody else to live in a community? I, I don't know how, I just don't know how it works.
I think you're, I think you're trying to distinguish between where the apartments are.
Well, I, I just know how it works.
Let's say it's an apartment, it's not near the dump, and it's not near the water. The point is, you've got a new housing unit, okay? It's probably going to be, you know, nicer than the depreciated structure that's 40 or 50 years old that you've been living in. Because as you said, they depreciate, they're not worth anything at some point, they're hard to move in any event. You've got a new apartment. New flooring, looks nice, design, the whole bit, appliances, everything's new. And you're paying a really discounted rate. Do you think there's something about that that's just unacceptable to a lot of mobile home park owners, that that couldn't be a reasonable substitute for where they live now?
I, I don't want to speak for them. I don't, because, I mean, I think, I think what's-
Well, I'm not, nobody knows. I just-
Nobody knows. And I think what's-
Do you have a sense from knowing them, how they might react?
Well, so my sense from having worked with homeowners for 30 years is that their homes are their castles.
Okay.
Regardless of the cost of that home, and kind of regardless of where it's situated. That's where their spouse, where they've lived with their family, their kids have grown up, their spouse died on that bed in their bedroom. It's not for me to say, yes, they'd be better somewhere else.
Yeah.
That's where their memories are. That's where they've lived their lives, and, and we, we shouldn't be-
Yeah.
-denying them that.
Well, I wouldn't necessarily deny them that, but you're saying, that, that's a problem they would have with that proposal. Right. Go ahead, Scott.
How about, yeah, a system where you advertise that you buy the, it's, come in and you buy a useful $20,000 and, and, back up the rent, and then you can have a formula for the Amber that, so that if they raise it more than the CPI, then they've got to buy it for the, uh- buy it for the, uh, value at the time that it, and rents go up extraordinarily high, like you, you're afraid of. What about that kind of a system?
That the landlord would have to buy the home if they raised the rent too much?
I'm just throwing that out there. It'd be a lot, a lot fair, fairer to them than have, uh, have rent control that they can, they can, because in that way, then the, the homeowner, that you're, you're calling the homeowner, which I think is correct, then he doesn't get a zero.
The landlords acquire the homes anyway when the, when the, when the homeowner is economically evicted, they get the home for free.
No, that's not the whole time. So that, what about that type of, of protection? That would seem to be more fair even the, and the, the, the landlords getting a, hopefully a, a fair bargain. I, I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there as, as a, another way of looking at it so that somebody can't, you know, just die, they can't pay the rent and they got to walk away for their, for their $15,000 investment.
Right, right.
But if they've been there five years, you depreciate it, you got to over, you know, how, you know, maybe it's only worth $8,000 by the time they get out of there. I, I, I don't know. That's something I just popped into my mind and I don't know if, if it was, you know, that-
I think it'd be dangerous to try to do that because there's not just a straight-line depreciation on these homes in a community. I have some numbers here from some of our communities. One of them that's almost 40 years old and these homes date from when the community was originally built. One home in January 2015 sold $35,000 and was relisted last summer and sold for $65,000. Another home, uh, sold in 2012 during the, probably during the, the, the year of the market at $10,000 and sold last November at $75,000. So clearly something's happening. More likely than not is people coming in buying and rehappening these homes. And I don't think they'd be doing that if they truly felt that they were buying into a dead-end community for one thing. Uh, but also there's just the rising housing costs all around these neighborhoods. So these home values are going to start rising. Another one of our communities that is 40 years old, they got into a bidding war on a 40-year-old home and ended up going for about $109,000. And I assure you, it didn't sell for that new 40 years ago. So these aren't just sinking funds. And it goes back to the point I made earlier about this being a bite of the market. There are those communities that are well-maintained, well-located and are not likely going anywhere, even in, you know, these hot economic times right now. And there are certain, uh, certain developments or certain communities that have probably reached the end of their useful economic lives. You know, it's sad, it's tragic, and there should be a program in place to help those residents when relocation may inevitably happen. But I don't think you're doing anybody any favors by forcing people to stay in a 50-year-old community in 50-year-old homes, which are slowly failing and falling apart. So trying to tell the landlord, well, now you've got to buy a home because you raised rent. Well, how do you attach the value to that at this point? As I'm showing here, you can't, there's no guaranteed straight-line depreciation scheduled to follow on one of these homes.
But that's interesting. But if, if it's going up, then the, the, the owner of the thing is going to benefit from that.
Absolutely.
And they don't need to worry about a depreciation.
Exactly. I mean, both sides win in that, in that way, I think. And I would say, I mean, rents have been going up every year. Even though in 2012 rents were considerably lower than they are today, that home still sold 4.75 times what it had sold in 2012. So again, I think there's a direct correlation between rental amounts and final sales values or sales prices. I mean, certainly will have an impact at a certain point. I mean, you go into a rundown community that's charging $800 a month rent, probably not going to spend a whole lot of money on that home. But again, I'm just, I'm just saying that I feel like we're now working with a very broad brush trying to lump every manufactured home community into the same category and not paying attention to the minute details that differentiate each community. So, sorry, just, when you were mentioning that I had these numbers here, right, that's why I wanted to bring that up, that these homes don't just drop.
Do you guys ever talk to each other? I mean, I mean, do you guys, is there any common ground on something like that? That, that she would endorse and, and the landlord?
I've had meetings with Ishbel and all of us. Uh, this is some new group. Yes, we talked to tenant groups, um, uh, MHTW does, um, coming up with, uh, to, or potential options to give her.
And so is that-
And it, it's because right now, the fact that housing prices are going up and there's more demand than housing, um, it kind of goes through cycles. So, and there's a lot of demand, there's a big cycle. I mean, people that bought houses in 2006 or whatever, they were crying that, you know, hey, they lost all the money on houses while rents weren't going up much in manufactured housing community. Prices weren't going up. I mean, it was, you know, like back in the 60s. Shut off the lights, Boeing left now. I mean, everything goes through cycles. Right now, we're on an upswing. So prices are going up, um, there's more demand, um, for the land. There's more demand for houses. So the housing prices are going up. Um, and that's-
So is there, was your exchange of ideas written down and, and?
Well, what Ishbel just said here about the three things that she needed for a manufactured housing community to be built outside of the GMA was news to me because last year when she did that, it was not the same three options.
I'll look at the record and tell you.
But I, I'd also like to speak to the idea of tying, uh, leases to CPI because we have a community such as that with a long-term lease, 25-year leases, because again, the long-term owners, we are looking at redeveloping these new communities we build. But that does not always keep up with the actual cost increases in a neighborhood. I mean, we're probably a hundred, $150 behind per month on, uh, market rents in some of these communities. After 20 years, you start to notice that delta in what you're taking in versus what you could be taking in and what expenses have done in the meantime. I mean, you've got utilities going up 4%, 5% per year. You've got property taxes going up as well. I mean, we were, somebody was mentioning that being a homeowner is one way to protect yourself from cost increases. Well, my property taxes have gone 16% in one year.
Okay, let me say limit.
Yeah, sorry.
It's, you're right. It's, it's, it's not a silver bullet.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm just saying that there, you know, it, it's a challenge. You, if you try to do that long-term lease and say, okay, we will tie it to CPI, because what is it really measuring? I mean, I, and asphalt projects go up 4%, 4.5% year over year for the same job. And that's, you know, that starts to suck real money when you're only getting a 1.2% CPI increase or 1.7% depending on which region you're, you're measuring. So, you know, it's horrible rent control, yes. I mean, it's a, it's maybe more efficient than having a rent control board that just sets it automatically. But it doesn't, it's not necessarily a panacea.
Well, yeah. In fact, as you said, there are cities that have rent control account for CPI improvements. And sometimes they have a board that sets the rate at which you can increase your rent. It's still rent control.
Yeah.
So to say, requirement one, you can only raise it by CPI. I don't know how that doesn't violate the statewide prohibition on rent control. In fact, I, I think, Ishbel, you were saying there were communities that do that, which they can do voluntarily.
Yeah, it was a voluntary-
Was that a zoning thing?
Well, they'll have rent control on your instruction.
Anyway, nobody's proposing rent control for, for Kenmore.
We're having a little off topic there. No, I was talking, just mentioning that there are some communities in the state-
They're voluntary.
Yeah, that's all I was mentioning, just giving you an example that it does exist, that some landlords have chosen to do that with a long-term lease and a CPI-linked rent.
Right. It's a little confusing and we're just trying to clear it. And I appreciate that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. But, you know, yeah, I won't get into which jurisdictions have rent control in California, for instance.
Right. Mike?
Hopefully, quick question. Craig, you might be in the best position to answer this representing some of the park owners. Have any mobile home communities attempted a condominium model where both the dwelling unit and the land upon which it sits are owned by the same person while perhaps in a management function, a group maintains the greater infrastructure? But that leaves some of the, Ishbel raises, uh, insecurity around rents, hikes or changes in the development nature of the land while, I'll stop there.
That's in essence what the, what she's talking about, the Rock, uh, that it's owned by the residents. Uh, they-
They own, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Do they own it as a collective or do they own it individually?
No, as a collective. It's a collective. Mm-hmm. So it's not what you were suggesting.
It's not actually.
That really substituting tenant owners or resident owners as, as opposed to a, an individual?
Yeah.
Some of the issues remain and some of the issues-
Well, the nice thing about the resident model, and I've, as I say, I've helped two communities do that in Washington State. And it's been in existence in New Hampshire for about 20 years. About at least 20% of the manufactured housing communities in New Hampshire are resident-owned. That's where it started. And now Rock USA is a national entity that helps communities around the country become resident-owned. And so basically, what you're paying in rent now becomes your mortgage, right? And you own the land cooperatively. Everyone pays a share into the co-op. It's not, not much, but enough to give you a vote. And you can choose whether you want to be a member of the co-op or not. Um, and, and the nice thing about that is that then the co-op, um, appoints a board of homeowners and they determine, you know, everything from the budget to who's going to do what. And sometimes they'll, they'll contract out services. They don't necessarily want to go door-to-door to collect their neighbor's rent. So they might have a management company that does some of that. They might have landscapers, contractors that do that. But they determine their budget. They, they, they have a capital improvement fund as well as an ongoing maintenance fund as well as, you know, operating expenses. And, and to this, to date, none of those resident-owned communities has ever defaulted on their loans, um, which is very impressive for regular people, you know, running. And some have been able to reduce their rents, which is nice. And some have refinanced. And those are the communities where the federal government is interested in doing pilot programs around financing for new manufactured homes because, doing a mortgage rather than a chattel loan because they know that those, that land is secure. Um, it's where Energy Star Homes are going in. There's a lot of replacement of the older homes with Energy Star Homes, uh, which are the really good, um, you know, really, really, uh, well-run, efficient homes. So there's great models out there that I think can help revive the manufactured housing scenario around resident ownership.
You had said, Ishbel, that they can, mobile home park owners can improve the infrastructure such as the sewage system without losing all of their rents for a period of time. That contradicts, I think, what Craig had said. So how do they do that?
Well, um, I know that the resident-owned communities have figured that one out. You know, they are able to improve, because they're buying communities. Some of them will be 30 or 40 years old. And if they haven't had any improvements to that infrastructure, they know what they're buying. And they know to set that money aside and to make sure they've got that, those funds available. And they've been able to do it, um, without, as far as I know, certainly not closing the whole community. Whether they've had to move one or two homes at a time, I don't know. But they certainly haven't gone completely without rent, um, while they've done it. So they've figured out, because a lot of it's just, you know, the, the lines are between the homes, right? There are a lot of the lines are, are down the street. Um, so-
Well, that's why I was challenging Craig on that. But Craig was saying, well, you can't treat one class of the residents differently than another class of the residents. Or Craig, you can correct me on this if you like. So isn't that the same case when it's community-owned?
I think what Craig was referring to is a state law that, where you can't close part of the community. You either close the community or you don't close the community. And I think that's what he was saying, that in order to do a piecemeal approach, you'd have to close at least temporarily part of the community to do that. And when people own their homes, um, that's not so feasible. So I think that's what you were saying, Craig. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So under the Rock system, and it's a community-owned system, you're saying they don't have to comply with the state law?
No, they do.
Or they just do it differently?
They do it differently. They do comply with state law, but they've figured out a way where they can do it in a piecemeal fashion perhaps, but in a way that allows them to do the infrastructure improvement without displacing the homeowners while they do it.
So Craig, why couldn't the homeowners do that? Or the park, park owners do that?
Well, for one reason is because they're all part of the same co-op. So they all agree on whatever it is. So the homeowner buys into whatever the system is. Park owner at that point buys into whatever. Whereas if you've got a tenant that does not want to have their home disrupted or, you know, have a new system. Also costs involved in the system. Got to raise the rent to make-
Right. Thanks. And so Craig had also said, he, he talked about that too, is how do, and how do the, how does the co-op of, own, of homeowners who now own the park deal with the increased costs? Is there, is there trouble affording that? I mean, it's gone up now by another level because they're carrying a mortgage in addition to their lot rent.
No, the lot rent covers the mortgage. The lot rent, rent becomes the mortgage.
Is it higher?
And as, as I said earlier, in some places they've reduced the rent actually.
Okay.
Because they're not, the, the profit margin isn't there, right?
Well, I thought, I got the sense from Craig that this can be a more expensive proposition to now buy the land.
No.
In addition to keeping up your unit.
The, the more, the, what they were paying, what they were paying in rent is enough to cover the mortgage, cover the operating costs, cover ongoing maintenance and put some aside for the infrastructure or long-term. Because they're invested in staying there. They've, they, they're not taking the money out. The, the profit is being reinvested into the community. So that's why they have the money to do it. The landlords are a private entity, as you said before. They're a business. They're taking profit that's not necessarily going back into their business. And that's the difference.
Craig, is that, do you want to respond to that?
Um, I don't know the exact numbers, but I have talked to, um, other communities.
But I think you were saying it's more expensive, not just whether they get a discount, they actually incur more costs. There's a mortgage, there's interest, they own land now. It doesn't, it wasn't free.
Yeah, it depends on what it sells for. And I don't think I said that they would be, it automatically is more expensive for a man to-
Okay. Thanks. Trying to-
And I think it's, if the community wants to get together and buy their community, it's great.
Yeah, yeah. And you said that. Yeah. It seems like both sides are in agreement on that.
I mean, because I think it's good.
Yeah.
You know, they can afford to do it.
Jeremy?
But admittedly, e- even in a presentation by Rock, uh, one of the, the process takes longer. They have to do it at a certain cap rate that is above what the mark, uh, is incentivized an owner to want to sell to Rock because they need a higher cap rate to make a pencil.
The tenants need a higher cap rate.
They need, they need to, they need to buy it at a higher cap rate, is how he explained it, meaning-
That means a lower price for the owner.
Lower price, so it, it, that's not, it, it, you're not paying, uh, you're not getting market value for your property if you're going through a rock.
Why would you sell the rock then?
That's a great question.
Okay. And why shouldn't they get market value? Okay. All right. It is 9:29. You did get your hour. But if you want to come back-
They got some of it now, that's okay.
I didn't count the minutes, but I think we're pretty close. If you guys want to come back, you're obviously welcome. We have the citizen comment portion. If there, I mean, I, I don't have a lot more questions. I might have a few if my colleagues have more.
I can leave business cards or, or Laurie can, can give you the my contact information.
All right.
Be happy to respond to any further questions. But thank you. I appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you. You guys are both sides. You've been great. This is really constructive to get you guys together like this. So thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Uh, looking at the agenda, there is nothing beyond this. Uh, are there any announcements or new business items that any of the commissioners like to bring up?
I have one.
Please.
Go Huskies.
Whoa.
I didn't have a-
Going out on a limb, Scott McDonald in Kenmore says, "Go Huskies." But Mike Mulcair wants to rebut that.
I go Huskies.
There you go. All right.
So-
Fair and balanced. I'm sorry. A third one?
Oh, no.
Seattle U?
I just actually have boring old, um-
Boring rules, please.
Boring old work here. Uh, so on January 16th, uh, the city, uh, the 15th is a holiday.
Yeah.
So the city council is taking the 16th for a city council meeting. That would be a normal planning commission meeting date.
On a Tuesday.
Right, correct. And so, uh, I, we need to have you all cancel that planning commission meeting. And then we'll, um, depending on where we get in the next couple of meetings, we'll figure out, um, what that second meeting in January might look like. Does that sound all right?
Okay. So do I hear a motion to cancel the January 16th meeting?
Mm-hmm. I'll make a motion to cancel the January 16th meeting in favor of the council meeting on that night.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Do I hear a discussion? All in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. There being none. Any extensions are being none. The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cancelled. And with- Cancelled, and with no new business, I... Yes, please.
I just wanted to thank my commissioners, Donald and Baker, for agreeing with myself to join the planning commission for another three years term, in January.
I didn't even know it!
Great.
That's your job to tell us this is going on, right?
No.
Thank you for doing that.
We have signed this for, for three years, as I understand.
Well, it's all about the money, and I, you know, you reap what you sow, yeah. Thank you for re-enlisting, it's, it'll, it'll make it a seamless, you know, process as we go forward. And we're, I'm really pleased to hear that. Anything else? Can't top that, all right. Next meeting is December twenty-fifth.
Or, no, no, yeah, I think it's December five, is it five?
All right.
Yeah. No. Correct. And then January, I think it's January second.
All right. Anything else? I hereby adjourn this meeting, thank you, everybody.